Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Can we all hear each other? Good evening, your pro tem.
Good evening.
Oh, boy. Busy, busy, busy as be. Oh, I need a pen. Hang on one second. We almost all here? Think we are. Good. Welcome, everyone. My name is Ari Parker. I'm the mayor of Watsonville. And I'd like to welcome you on behalf of myself and our council and our fabulous City of Watsonville staff to our Tuesday, January 25th city council meeting. Madam Clerk, if you would take a roll call.
Guta.
Here.
Strada.
President.
Garcia.
Here.
First.
Here.
Montesino. Quiros Carter.
Here.
Parker. Here. Did we lose? No, there's Mayor Pro Tem. Montesino. Okay. From, we don't need to excuse the absence of any council members, so we will continue with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. So we have some information items, the report of disbursements. They are in there and hopefully the councils had a chance to take a look at them and any miscellaneous documents report at this time on A and B. And we will move on to new business, which is what we're here to listen to tonight. The public has, is going to have an opportunity to talk about the city manager recruitment. And our staff report will be by Maria Hurtado from Peckham and McKinney. And I think I'm aware of the thought that you're going to give them very specific questions. So everybody only has one time to speak. So they're going to want to listen to that and, and really hear you so that they can have broad answers for whatever you need. And so I'm going to turn it over to Maria.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here with you and I'm going to share my screen. I don't know if you can see my screen at this point. Very good. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Maria Hurtado. I am the executive recruiter for Peckham and McKinney and it's a pleasure to see you again and to support the council with the city manager recruitment. When the council began the city manager recruitment, the council expressed a desire to have a community input component in the recruitment process because you wanted to hear from the Watsonville community what attributes and skills they would like to see in the city's next city manager. And the two ways that we set out to obtain community input was through a community survey, which was administered in December. And the other is tonight with the council hosting the community forum. Now, the intent of administering the community survey early on in the recruitment process was to capture what the community shared in the survey and include a summary of the feedback in the recruitment brochure before opening up the recruitment and the other way tonight's community forum will give the council yet another opportunity to hear directly from the public what the community's desires are for the next city manager. The council can use tonight's community feedback along with the results of the survey as you, the council, consider and interview the candidates in March. So before we begin the public input tonight, I'd like to give the council a quick overview of the results of the survey. The community survey was administered, as I mentioned, between December 15th and January 3rd in both English and Spanish and was placed on the city's website. The survey links were posted on the city's Instagram and Twitter accounts. And they were also sent to over 55 agencies and organizations for distribution, including, as an example, the YMCA, American Red Cross, the Palo Valley Unified School District, the Rotary Palo Valley Health Trust, the Santa Cruz Office of Education, Santa Cruz County, to the assembly members and a number of other local agencies in Watsonville. And we received 258 responses, which is a really good response rate with 256 of those respondents responding to the English survey and two responding to the Spanish survey. In the upper right hand of this slide are the top five personal attributes the English respondents thought were important in the next city manager. The respondents to the English survey want someone with a strong financial understanding, a strong manager of people and resources who is committed to inclusive leadership. They want a dynamic leader who is a people person and a relationship builder. On the bottom right hand corner of the slide, you can see the Spanish survey respondents who stated that they want a city manager who is committed to inclusive leadership, is involved in and has a presence in the community, who is goal and solutions oriented, someone with integrity, a strong work ethic, disciplined, and who is also a dynamic leader. We also asked them what their top five career experience the candidates should have. And the English survey respondents thought the new city manager should have previous experience as a city manager, assistant city manager, or deputy city manager, or a department head who has public sector, local government experience in an agency of similar size, scope, complexity, and diversity as that of Watsonville.
Maria, this is a little bit skewed. There it is. Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Can you see?
Yeah, I couldn't read it and I didn't know if it was mine or somebody, everybody's. It was kind of split. Go ahead. It looks, it's all clear again.
Okay. The Spanish survey, did I finish the English survey respondents? They also wanted, and the English survey respondents also wanted someone with experience building a strong economic base. The Spanish survey respondents, as you can see in the lower right hand corner, wanted someone with local government experience and experience as an assistant city manager, deputy city manager, or department head. But they also wanted someone with a proven ability to effectively create or maintain momentum and effectively lead the organization with a track record of positive community relations. Let me know if you can see this slide. Yes? Okay, the community was also asked for their opinion on the top five important local issues the new city manager should be aware of. And although ranked in a slight variation of order, the top five for both the English and Spanish survey respondents are listed here. They include financial stability of a city, public safety, homelessness, improvements of capital infrastructure, economic, business climate, and economic and business development, as well as active transportation like biking and walking infrastructure. As I mentioned earlier, getting this community feedback at the start of the recruitment process was helpful and we wanted to capture the attributes and skills the community stated they were looking for in the city manager recruitment brochure. Excuse me, before we began advertising the position so that the candidates could see not only what the council was looking for, but also so they could get a sense of what the community's desires are. We summarized the top attributes in this paragraph, which was included in the recruitment brochure. The community provided a lot of information in the community survey and the council received pages and pages of verbatim comments from the public in the survey. You will hear probably more community feedback tonight. This additional feedback can be helpful as the council interviews and deliberates the city manager candidates during the interview process. To close my presentation, Mayor, I wanted to share the next steps of the recruitment process, which are listed on this slide. The city manager recruitment opened on January 7th and the filing deadline is in a little over two weeks on February 10th. Once the application period closes, I will review the applicant pool to ensure they meet the minimum qualifications and will particularly be looking for the attributes the council and the community shared they'd like to see in the candidates. I will also have preliminary interviews with candidates the last week of February before recommending candidates to the council on March 8th. And at that time, the council will select the top candidates who will participate in the panel interviews, which are scheduled for March 22nd. To summarize, Mayor, the two ways the council set out to obtain community input was at the beginning of the recruitment process by administering the community survey, which, as I mentioned, helped finalize the recruitment brochure before we began posting it. And the other is by hosting tonight's community forum where council will receive community input on what the community would like to see in the next city manager. These are the two questions I've listed on this slide, just as a starting point to help guide the community input process. I don't know if it's possible to keep this slide on so that the communities can see the questions, but Mayor, this concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it back to you to begin the public input process.
Great. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't keep those there. Council, do you have any objection to that? Because so the public can see that and keep their eye on it. Before we move on to public and I, the public comments, and I know that's why we're here in this section tonight is to listen to the public. Do we have any clarifying questions from council? Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Maria, thank you so much for your report and I really appreciate all that you've done in terms of reaching out to the community. But with that in mind, you did list all the different agencies and organizations that you shared the survey with, but I'm just wondering if there was anything more you could have done to get more than just two Spanish language surveys returned.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Garcia. I'd like to tap into Natalie because she and I work very closely together. I know she's in the meeting tonight. And we work together with some of the other staff. If you saw the list of different agencies and people that the link was distributed to, these are the ones that the city has developed over time, as you've done different community outreach and Natalie, I don't know if you'd like to add anything else in terms of the distribution list and particularly with the Spanish speaking distribution list.
So as you mentioned, we did send it out to over almost 60 organizations and agencies in terms of the Spanish, trying to obtain Spanish speaking input. I know it was posted on our Facebook page in English and Spanish, as well as Instagram. So I don't have anything more to add except for that we did try to, to cast a wide net to get, to get input from all of our local organizations and agencies.
Okay, thank you. I have two more questions. My second question is, it's interesting to note that the only thing in common between the English survey and the Spanish survey was dynamic leadership. And the Spanish survey had involvement and the presence in the community, but the English survey did not mention that. And so I just wondered if you had any thoughts on that from your experience with surveys?
I think there's, there's several, there's several options that people can choose and they're all, the community input is, is different than, and I'm trying to find my notes on the, the survey. In the Spanish, in the English survey, they did say that they wanted someone who was committed to inclusive leadership and, and you can translate that as, as inclusive, meaning all segments of the community. So, so they chose to use that way to describe, you know, them having a presence or, you know, just a, you know, foresight about being involved and engaging with the community of Watsonville.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. And my final question is, the Spanish survey identified biking and walking infrastructure as an issue. And I'm surprised because we hear that, but in fact, that wasn't mentioned with the English speakers. And I'm surprised because we, we normally hear that advocacy from the English speakers, English speakers also. But I'm curious why you did not mention that in your paragraph from the community about the biking and pedestrian issue.
If you notice, there were three categories that we asked, we asked for the attributes and skills as one category, as I, as I presented in the slide. And then we also asked for, for experience and background that they were looking for, and then also for local issues and we can, we, we, I wish we could have included a lot more of what the community.
Yeah. V. Chief Lopez has an open mic. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. It was, Councilmember Garcia, I focused on just including the top attributes and skills. We did not include the experience and all of the other information, just because we didn't have enough room in the brochure. But the survey is there really for the council to consider as you, as you deliberate on the, on the candidates, because you have a lot, you know, you have a lot more information. You'll get probably more information from tonight's community forum, all of which you can use as you, as background information as you consider the candidates, but that was the reason, just limited space.
Yeah, I understand that. Thank you, Maria.
Okay. And let's see. Thank you very much. Why am I there? I'm going back to gallery. So Councilman Montesino, you were next. I can't hear you. Is it me?
I wanted to ask a question about how many, can you share with us how many candidates have already applied today?
I, I should have looked at the list and I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't looked, but I can tell you from experience that many of the, of the candidates wait until the last week to submit their applications because they end up doing a lot of research. They end up doing site visits. They want to get to know the community. So I apologize. I should have looked before I did this presentation. So I don't have a definite number for you right now.
Thank you.
But I have spoken to a lot of people who have, who are considering and I have some, some really good candidates who said that we're going to be submitting. So I'm excited about the outcome.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Dutra, you had your hand up.
It was the same question, but if you could email us tomorrow, because I think that this is something that may be a lot, I mean, we're, we're all interested, I would imagine. So
yeah.
You could email us tomorrow, that number, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Super. Councilwoman Quiros Carter.
And hello, Maria. Nice to see you again. I had a question regarding the way that the surveys were distributed. I'm assuming that in accordance with our climate action plan, the surveys were distributed and soft copy, so they were distributed electronically. I'm wondering if the surveys were able to be printed when they were distributed out to our partners? If hard copies were accepted and counted, is that something that was considered? Just in terms of equity and you know, access to internet and computers and things like that.
I'm going to tap into Natalie again, because in all, in all honesty, I relied heavily on, on partnering with the city because you know your community, you know, you know, who the stakeholders are and the organizations and Natalie and staff were instrumental in getting the word out. Natalie, are you there?
I am. Hello again. So my understanding is that we, we really did focus more on the electronic distribution of the survey. Had we gotten any requests for a hard copy, we certainly would have provided one and accepted one, but we, to my knowledge, we did not receive any, any request for, for a hard copy, but most of the, all of the distribution, to my knowledge, was electronic.
Thank you both.
All right. Are any other clarifying questions from the council? All right, we are now going to begin our public comments. And Madam City Clerk, who do we have?
Um, start. For any members of the public who want to speak, please raise your hand and I will allow you to speak. Peter Castillo.
So just as a quick reminder, before we start anybody's timer, we have two minutes to speak. We've left up these questions that Maria Hurtado would like you to focus on. And, but you don't have to, you can do your own thing. But it is in regards to seeking additional input for our new city manager. Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Go ahead, Pete. Peter Castillo, I think.
That's Pedro Betris.
Pedro.
Happy New Year, City Council. Feliz Ano Nuevo. Especially good to see the new city councilperson, Quiros Carter. And happy to see you, Maria. It's been quite a while, but good to see you. I have three questions and this is to possibly the mayor who might know this. Are there any considerations or prerequisites or is this in the job description? Are the following three items? One, does a candidate or the final person have to live in the city of Watsonville, whoever is selected? That would be one question. Secondly, is it recommended that the candidates and the final person is bilingual? Eighty to eighty-five percent of the citizens residents of Watsonville are Spanish speaking. So bilingualism not required, but recommended. And then finally, is there any consideration for previous experience? Does a potential candidate or the final candidates have been a city manager for the last three to five years? These are just questions and I don't know if Maria or Ari can answer these. Thank you very much.
Hi there, Pedro. You know, we're not here to answer questions. We're here to actually take your input. So if you're saying you would like our human, excuse me, our our city manager to live in the city, be bilingual and have previous experience, we'd like to take that information down.
That's my recommendation, Ari.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you.
Monique, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Monica. That's how I say my name. It's Monica Tone. So first of all, I just would like to say thank you guys for having a meeting today and being on time. Second of all, I know you guys don't want to hear about it, but you know, we have a lot of homeless people out here that need help. So I would like to know a little bit about how do, what, what do we need to file to become city manager? What kind of things do you guys feel like you guys need help with out there in the community? That can support somebody's, you know?
Monica, this is Mayor Parker. Hey, I just want to refocus this. I know this is a different kind of forum, but this forum is really for you to tell us what you see, what you'd like to see in a city manager. And so, yeah.
Okay, how about, I would like to see a city manager actually, you know, we have a lot of sweeps that are going on and I would like to see a city manager put more focus into helping and providing services. You know, real services that can actually be obtained, not resources, services. So hopefully we can get somebody in office that will be able to provide those type of things or even have knowledge of where to go to obtain those things, because right now we're just focused on sweeps and getting people, getting rid of people when really there's no outlet to help and provide services. So hopefully there's somebody out there that can have a little bit more knowledge and a little bit more ways into the real community that needs help and stop providing the city who, you know, the city people who want to clean up and take up and, you know, from the people that actually need to have an opportunity to better themselves. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Monica. All right. Our next speaker.
Dr. Michelle Rodriguez. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much. So it's a pleasure to be here, part of this forum. So I did so appreciate many of the things that Matt did for the city and for the school district. So aligning with that, I really would like to continue to have someone who has a willingness to collaborate with the school district. We met quarterly and met every other month through the intergovernmental and I think it really provided the resource and the ability for us to work more powerfully together than we have in previous years. And I'd also like the person to have a desire to find additional projects that are mutually beneficial so that together we can continue to improve the community. I have a desire to work with this person and I hope they too would like to deepen our current partnerships and support. So thank you very much.
Thank you, boss. Our next speaker.
Ellie, go ahead, please. Ellie, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, awesome. Hi. Um, yes, so important attributes that I feel this city manager should possess is something that adheres to our Article 7 for the city manager under Section 700 in our city's charter. Um, there should be a city manager with at least one year's previous experience or three years previous experience as assistant manager. I would also like to request for this job to be listed in the NorCal APA, the Planning Association, and I wanted to know if that's something that's been done. And I want to prioritize a Latinx planner with a master's in planning and a member of the AICP to be our new city manager, someone that's experienced. I don't necessarily think there should be someone that lives in Watsonville. I believe that a Latinx planner, especially if they are part of the APA, they have a code of ethics that would really be beneficial to Watsonville. I agree with what Pedro said and our new city manager should be bilingual based on our demographics and meet the very least requirements that are part of our city charter. Um, I, I also want to just comment that people obviously have questions and I think that the community would have really have benefited if this could have been a forum where ideas can be exchanged so that we could learn more about this process and be able to have our questions answered instead of just speaking at you, we could be speaking with you. I think that that would have been very beneficial. Two hundred and fifty-eight responses is a very low response. I know that people, some people got emailed the survey on January 3rd at nine AM to being told that the survey closed that day. So I feel like we should have done a little bit more outreach on that. I don't know if it's still possible to do so. But yeah, someone that meets the minimum requirements, please.
Thank you, Ellie. Before we go any further, let me, let me backtrack just a little bit and, and ask Maria. Before we go any further, let me backtrack just a little bit and ask Maria, is there a place where people can go to look at the brochure that we put out? Because a lot of these questions seem to be, you know, there, it's actually in the brochure, number one. And because we're not going to be answering questions here, so if there is a place they can do that. And then to refocus the public that this is a forum to hear what you have to say about these two questions. And, but we'll take the information and move forward, and we'll see what happens. Next, we have a plan, but Maria?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. They can go to the Peckham and McKinney site. We have all of our searches there. Natalie, I don't know if you put it on the Watsonville site as well? Before I direct them to the Watsonville site?
Yes, it is on the City of Watsonville website.
So the City of Watsonville website, they can go to the Peckham and McKinney website, or they can contact Natalie and we, or I, and we can send them a copy of the brochure.
Okay, that would be great. And if we can, I'd love to pop it on the screen at some point so people can actually take a look at it for later. But thank you very much. And who is our next speaker?
Bernie, go ahead.
Bernie, welcome.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council, Bernie Gomis with Milpa. And just, you know, just thinking about how important this position is, right? Really, it's, it's, it's like it's larger casket web that it has to maneuver and navigate through. I think the city, the next city manager, one, yes, must be bilingual, right? I agree with having the APA from the Latino caucus there, right? Someone representative that's educated in this, as a planner, you know, someone that is ready and able to really have, you know, community forums, you know, like, you know, really be engaged with community, you know, with the community that, whose voice is not heard, you know? I understand that there's a lot of work that needs to be done with all these different departments. But at the same time, I guess another attribute is being readily and able to challenge just the status quo. You know, to be innovative, to be, to be a visionary, right? To be someone that looks at the problems of the city and finds, tries to find the solutions, not a Band-Aid solution, right? Actually try to uplift the community's social determinants of health through, you know, responsible budgeting, right? Understanding that the city manager, that's what he does, you know? And, and someone that's able to work with the city council also as well, you know? Listen, right, and, and have also, you know, strong, you know, comments or not comments, but just ideas, you know, someone that's very involved in that, in that facet, and not just, even as an example right now, you know, really engaging the, our brown community, the Spanish-speaking community, finding ways to bring those people in, right? Because it's just, there's a, there's a, there's a voice that's needed. All right, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. And our next speaker.
Sitlali, go ahead, please.
Sitlali, welcome.
Hello. Sorry for the background noise, some stuff going on. But I completely agree with a few points that people have made. The person that comes in needs to have a clear experience in this position. I think that a person who is a member of the APA would be great. You know, I don't, I don't think that the person necessarily has to be from Watsonville because I, you know, as long as a person grows up in a community that, you know, is similar to Watsonville, that comes from a similar demographic, would be enough. You know, that person would be able to understand the community needs that we have here because, you know, marginalized communities are a lot of the time very similar. I also believe that this person needs to be able to gain the community's trust. Because as of right now, you know, our city is really struggling, you know, there, and there isn't that unity that we really need to be seeing in order to push Watsonville forward. You know, we have a big, young community, and our youth are feeling very left out of conversations like these. So, you know, a city manager that is going to prioritize making, you know, gaining the trust from our community, building relationships with, with those who oftentimes are not reached out by the city. A city manager that is going to prioritize the needs of the community and build pathways and opportunities for those who live here. Because a lot of the times, you know, thank you.
Appreciate your comments, Sitlali. Who is our next speaker?
Karina, please go ahead.
Karina, welcome. If you're speaking, we can't hear you.
We can.
No, we still can't hear you. Karina, is that the one with the, there she is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Thank you. Hi, this is Karina Moreno from Milpa, and I would just like to reiterate and add that I would like the city council to consider our community makeup when looking for a city manager and really find someone who has passion and wants to bring in more resources to our community. Because we've been suffering, you know, we were set back a couple of decades from the deficiencies we have. And I hope that they, the person they bring in has a knowledge on how to work with these system-impacted communities, has ideas on how our community can bridge the digital divide, you know, education on the environmental racism and the homelessness that, that's becoming a larger and larger problem. And also someone who is wanting to listen and work in, excuse me, my dogs, with the city council and local organizations that have been established here and have been working as well as community members. I'm really excited, you know, I think this is a really great opportunity for Watsonville to get some great leadership and find someone who, you know, can take us to that next level. So I hope, I hope, I hope we all get to work together on this. Thank you.
Sounds like your dog agrees, Karina.
He does, very passionate.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And our next speaker.
I don't see, hold on. I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay, well then, I have a quick question. I've been taking notes, but is anybody else taking notes so that the council gets a kind of a summary of what we heard here? Or is that going to be part, Maria, of our information that we get in our report?
I can certainly go back and summarize all of these for you. I don't know, I'll work with the, because I know we do minutes, I don't know if we, but we'll get you something.
Okay, I have good notes too, so you guys can have some of mine.
That would be great, yes.
Okay. All right, so we have finished our public comment, if there's no other public comment on this. And it looks to be, I have to look at the time. It is 6:07. At this time, I want to thank Maria for her presentation and for being here and for gathering all this information and for continuously bringing more and more information to council to help us make a decision once we get to that point. And so I guess we're going to stop, or do we continue on with our meeting? I'm a little confused because at 6:45, are we going to have a quick meal break for everybody or just a 15-minute? We told the public 6:45, so I guess we're going to have to stick with 6:45.
Yes.
Regardless of it. So we'll be back at 6:45 to continue the meeting, and we hope to see all of you there at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. And we're going to be moving on to our presentation and oral communication. This time is set aside for the members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of this city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented. All matters of administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification and report. So all speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live in order to obtain an accurate record for our minutes. So we will begin with oral communications from the public about things that are not on the council agenda. And do we have any speakers, Madam Clerk?
Steve, go ahead, please.
It is, welcome, Steve.
Well, good evening, council and mayor and city manager and public. Steve Trillo from District 7, Cabrillo, a member of the Board of Trustees. I want to thank, first of all, three council members who showed courage last Thursday by voting no. That would be council members Kiroskater, council member Strava, council member Garcia. It was a narrow four-to-three vote dealing with reapportionment, but I want to encourage the public to remember that we, Watsonville was a major part, major part of the setup to get one person one vote and vote by districts. It's very important that you remember this, all of you. And remember that questioning authority is a good thing. In a democracy, we don't simply accept authoritative of a person unquestioningly. We need to understand that this is a democracy, and all points of view must be considered, particularly when drawing lines, and that can be lines for just about anything, that divide people into particular districts. So again, I want to thank all three council members for voting no. And remind the four that voted yes that we're watching you. We're watching very carefully or watching your movements simply because of what you do on the city council matters a great deal in the lives of people, all the people who live here in Watsonville, whether they are citizens, whether they are voters or not. So at that particular point, again, I want to thank all of you for being here and attending this very important meeting, and good evening.
Thank you, Steve. And our next speaker.
Ellie, go ahead, please.
Welcome, Ellie.
Hi, yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Ellie, and I live in District 7, and I want to reiterate everything that Trujillo just said. I spoke at the last city council meeting, and I said I wasn't really sure what it was that we were talking about, but I read today in the Pajaronian, what streets were moved out of District 2 and into District 6, and it's all like the rich homeowner streets, right? Like it's a huge disparity in economic standings. We have South Lincoln Street, right? That's a very specific area in District 2, and now we've carved out the very rich area, you would say, out of District 2 and put it into District 6. And it does not seem fair or balanced. And I, and I wish that there'd be more of an effort in being able to educate the public so that we can understand what it was that was happening. Because I would like to thank the city council members that voted no because that is a terrible thing that you're doing. It's redlining, it's just politically standpoints, right? It's just, it's just dirty and it's ugly to see in the Pajaronian what very specific streets were cut out out of a very specific district. It's disappointing to see, and if there's any way that that could be changed on February 8th, when I see that it's back on the agenda, if I could impose Montesino law to maybe reconsider changing your votes, if that's something that's possible. Because this could be potentially very dangerous, what you're doing for just the city of Watsonville in general. And I would also like to know who the candidates are, and from the forum that we just had, y'all said, asked Maria if she could email you who's so far been a candidate, applied for it. I want that to be like public knowledge so that we also can see the process.
Thank you, Ellie.
Time, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
I don't see anyone else. If any other member of the public wishes to speak, would you please raise the hand? I don't see anyone.
Okay, well then, we will move on to reports from the council. And we can start with Councilman Hurst.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm sorry to hear that folks are disappointed about the results of the, well, some folks are disappointed about the results of the redistricting decisions. You know, the redistricting process is a long and arduous process that involves the public. We've had dozens and dozens of meetings, and hey, I know everybody can't be happy all the time. But I think that the best, the best results of, for the city have been achieved here. And I'm not changing my mind on that. I'm looking for the future, and what can we do to strengthen this city in so many ways? You know, we had the city manager recruitment, community input meeting earlier this evening, and I was really pleased that we could hear from folks that wanted to change, and that's what I've stood for for many years, is more change, better changes, and trying to find the resources to really make a difference in this community. And so it's a real struggle, we can't do it by ourselves, we need help from We need help from outside the, you know, within and, and from, from the county and the state and the feds in many ways to make sure that our residents are as fully served as they can be. So these are difficult times, as I've said before. There's a lot of turmoil with the public and, you know, nationally, internationally and right here in Watsonville as well. So once again, I would call for public unity, try to work together, find solutions rather than just pick on others. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst. Councilman Estrada.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening to the public. I have nothing to report on, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Garcia.
Mayor, this is Rebecca. I've lost all audio and I don't know if it's just me.
Oh, okay, you can't hear me? Nope. Somebody text her and tell her to reboot.
I'm going to leave and, and start again, okay?
Good. All right, Councilwoman Kidos Carter.
Mayor, I have nothing to report at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dutra.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things to report. First of all, I want to say congratulations to SCIU. They got their contract and today Councilwoman Kidos Carter and myself went and spoke to the group who were relieved. And so we want to say congratulations to SCIU. I also just wanted to say it's been really rough at the school. So thank you to all our teachers and classified workers and everybody. I know that Omicron is just really getting flying through our schools. So just stay safe and just know that I'm there thinking of all of you that are in, in front of, in front of this. So, and that's it. And before we come back, what will, what's, World Wetlands, World Wetlands Day is on February 5th. So I just want to say I hope to see you all out there. I will be, I will be joining Wetlands Watch on World Wetlands Day on February 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Garcia, are you back with us? Councilwoman Garcia, can you hear her? Councilwoman Garcia, can you hear me?
Mayor, I don't even see her.
She's on. I see her face, but, and she unmuted, but she's not looking like she can hear me. Okay, I'm going to go over to Mayor Protem Montesino.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Just like to, you know, I read somewhere that, you know, the Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors allocated five million for the purchase of our Watsonville Hospital. So there's been some good efforts through the Paharo Valley Healthcare District Project that is, and getting, getting us, and I know our city manager is, we're working with, working alongside that group. So, and we're at the city level, I know there, hopefully this week or the next, we're going to get this up for our community. So hopefully, you know, good, good work on all those fronts. Also, just like to ask, so we can make an announcement for, because I always get tested by Ramsey and Ramsey Park, our place, but they, now they have a sign that they're moving to another location. So if we can get an announcement from staff to see where they're going, because that's a place where a lot of our community to go and get tested. And I'd like to get a, a report or from public works, what we're going to do about the sidewalk issue on Clifford, between Clifford and Strawberry Square Shopping Center. The sidewalk is tilting and, you know, it could collapse and it's, it's veering, you know, like 25 degrees at an angle. So it's, it's a safety issue that needs to get corrected. Probably it's a sidewalk, buyers' loop trails or something like those kinds. But thank you, that'd be all for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I've, I've been very busy and as Councilman Dutra said, you know, in the schools.
Is it my turn to speak?
Oh, well, hey, there she is. Can you hear me?
Let, Mayor, please, I told Rebecca that I would announce because we can hear her, she cannot hear us.
Okay. All right. So through translation on our email here or text, yes, go ahead, Rebecca. Go ahead, Councilwoman Garcia.
Okay. I got the signal hands up and I apologize. I don't know why. I have absolutely no audio. I restarted again and I still have no audio. So I may just be able to watch your mouse moves and I don't know, I'll be able to ask any more questions. Anyway, good evening. I attended eight meetings and most of them were virtual. At our last meeting, the mayor cut me off on my report because I had gone over my two minutes. I was not able to give you some good news, which I will give you now. I attended the Monterey Bay Green New Deal Meeting where Ashley from the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership said she was writing a green paper and in it she was going to use Watsonville's work on climate change as a model for the other jurisdictions in the region to use. In the same meeting, Leslie from Green Power said she was going to develop a climate toolkit and she would look for assistance to Watsonville, especially to Steve and Alex to help her develop that kit. We need to be proud of what the city of Watsonville is doing to address climate change. Last week, I participated in a radio interview alongside Senator John Laird and former supervisor John Leopold at KSQD. The theme was redistricting. The first 30 minutes, I spoke of the history of going from the at-large elections to single member district elections and the lawsuit that was won by the community. I also spoke about the success of having seven districts as the governing body of Watsonville. I also talked about how it could help Santa Cruz City. And in the last 30 minutes, Supervisor Leopold spoke about redistricting in Santa Cruz County and Senator Laird spoke about redistricting in the state and the impact it had on the central coast. In their comments, both of them spoke about the success of district elections in Watsonville. And that concludes my report.
Good job. All right, thank you, Councilwoman Garcia. And so I, I feel like I've attended more meetings than I can count. Councilman Dutra warned me that you will be busy and it is busy and it's just the start of it. So other than at school, my principal and vice principal are out with COVID. And we have so many classes that are getting tested completely all day. The dashboard that the district has is self-reporting, just an FYI for everyone by each school. So some schools have zero on there. Our school's very accurate, Bradley Valencia is very accurate. So if you're concerned, call your staff at the, at your child's school and they can tell you specifically what's going on there, because not all of it is being reported. I think the same situation is happening at, at city. And I know that, that our staffing is being impacted and we want to make sure that everybody stays safe during this spiking time as much as possible. I experienced, and I took my mom out to get tested out at the Fairland. Yes, still talking.
Hello?
Mute, mute your computer.
What? Mute my, oh.
There she goes. Okay. And if you haven't had that opportunity, they do a great job out there as well, as well as at Ramsey. Both places have been fabulous for testing. So if you'd like to drive through. Okay. So I'm going to move on at this point. And we are going to go to, oh, an acknowledgement of an award from the League of American Bicycle, bicyclists designating Watsonville as a bicycle-friendly community at bronze level. Does anybody on council want to speak to that? Other than say, go Watsonville. Okay. Good.
Sure, Mayor, I'll have a comment if I could.
All right, Councilman.
You know, I've been a bike rider most of my life and now I've kind of cut back a little bit because sometimes it's a little dangerous out there. And I think we could go a long way in following, I think we could be silver or gold if we put some more resources into a bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. And it's not just bikes, it's really pedestrians as well. And part of it's education and part of it's the physical environment and the design. So I would just say thank you to the association for recognizing the qualities that Watsonville does have. It's got pretty clean air and a moderate climate and a great place to bike. And we should really get out there and do more of that, including myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll move on to our consent agenda at this time. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommendation, recommended actions, which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion and the mayor, myself, will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. So we'll start with council. Is there a motion on the consent? Oh, public input first. So let's start with public input. Is there anybody who would like to speak on anything in the consent agenda? Oh, I need to pull back. Murray is here to present on, and I never, ever, ever pass on listening to Murray Fontes, what's your, say your last name. And so before we go continue on to public input, Murray, what would you like to say about our bronze level award?
Thank you, Mayor Parker, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to share this exciting award with the council. I'd like to make a presentation. Are you seeing?
Yes.
Last November, Watsonville was recognized as a bicycle-friendly community bronze level by the League of American Bicyclists. The 34-page application was prepared and submitted by the Watsonville Vision Zero Task Force with assistance from city staff. I would like to acknowledge and thank the task force members that worked on the application, including Teresa Rogerson of the Santa Cruz County Health Services Agency, Gina Cole of Bike Santa Cruz County, and Watsonville residents, Anna Cammer, Drew Rogers, and Justin Meek. The city had previously applied in 2017 and was awarded a bronze level. Watsonville is one of just two cities or counties within the tri-county area of Monterey, San Benito, and Santa Cruz to receive a bicycle-friendly award. As its name suggests, the Bicycle Friendly Community Program helps communities to become more bike-friendly. It does so by inviting communities to submit applications and then issuing a report card, which includes an assessment of existing plans, programs, and facilities and recommendations for improvement. Areas include enforcement, education, engineering, encouragement, and considers key outcomes that include ridership, crashes, and fatalities. Excuse me. Communities are recognized as being diamond, platinum, gold, silver, and bronze, as well as honorable mention. The Watsonville Vision Zero Task Force will review the recent report card and recommend changes to increase bicycle safety within the city and advance Watsonville toward becoming a silver in 2025. Some recommendations from the report card include the following. Continue to expand bicycle safety education. Begin the process of creating a new bicycle master plan or updating the 2012 Trails of Bicycle Master Plan. And continue to work on connecting the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail to the downtown. In the spring of this year, the Watsonville Vision Zero Task Force will bring an updated Vision Zero Task, excuse me, Vision Zero Action Plan to the council. The plan will incorporate recommendations received from the Bicycle Friendly Community Report Card. Receiving the bronze level award is a significant achievement for the city. It documents the many programs, policies, and improvements that support cycling. It's the product of collaboration between staff, city residents, and other agencies. And it identifies areas where the city can expand and improve upon the work that has already been done. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's nice to know a little bit more in-depth what that bronze medal, that bronze level means and looking forward to our silver medal. Thank you very much, Murray. We will then move on to where we were, public input on the consent agenda. So public input on the consent agenda. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. Bernie, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, once again, Buenos Aires, Mayor and City Council, Bernie Gomez with MIBA, District One. So I have a comment regards and a request also at the end in regards to the consent by 6G contract with Exxon Enterprise, recommended by Chief Samora. And I'm just thinking of this whole, like a sole, sole source purchase, right? I think there needs to be a level of like bargaining, right? Of seeking out, I don't know, lower cost equipment, you know? I'm not about providing equipment, more equipment for the police department after its continued growth and its militarized position that it's in. But that just, it caught my eye, right? It just locking, locking that, that bidding process, right? Also, just would like the council just to pull the item two and actually have a presentation done by the chief, right? In regards to this whole thing around the tasers and the, the cameras, you know, the vehicle cameras, right? 25 vehicles. It's a lot of vehicles, you know? So to, one, not have cameras already and two is like, in, it's like anyways, also, you know, just thinking about measure Y, you know, just want to throw it out there right now is how does this even, this council find a resolution or something to create a more equitable measure Y? If that's a, if that's a possibility, because 54% going to the police department from measure Y alone, right? And having 8% to Parks and Recs, you know, just makes no sense. But anyways, yeah, pulling 6G for a presentation, that would be cool, you know, just to get a further broad, more broader information from the police department. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Our next speaker.
Ellie, go ahead.
Hi, this is Ellie, District Seven. I'd like to reiterate everything that Bernie just said. And I would also like to ask that you pull item 6G and give us a presentation so that we could better understand why WPD feels the need to take more of our money when they are the department that gets the most money out of our general fund and out of our taxes and out of pretty much anything that you look at. WPD takes, is a multimillion dollar department. So I also would like to ask for a presentation so that we can better understand where it is that all our money is going. And, and remember that when we give this money to them, who is it that we're taking it from? If we're taking it from Parks and Recs, you're taking it from our children, right? If you're taking it from a certain department, from, you're taking it from our community, right? So please pull that item and give us a presentation so we could have a better understanding. Also, on item 6K, I would like to know how and at what capacity is Watsonville contributing to the homeless action partnership? We often hear from council that when it comes to county, Watsonville is left behind. So I would like to have a better picture of Watsonville's involvement in also contributing to ending homelessness. And on the discussion, it says that research has established strong correlations between rates of homelessness in each community and the housing affordability gap. So I think this is also a great opportunity to think of how we need affordable housing and what you guys are willing to do in changing the ordinances that we have. So when developers come into our city, they build houses and apartments that we can actually afford, because that will also help in this partnership and that will also contribute to ending homelessness, which is only going to get worse, looking at how much we're getting paid and how much rent keeps going up. And this is a problem all over the country, but here in Watsonville specifically, what can you as council do to try to end homelessness in Watsonville? I would also like to see someone else appointed to this. I would like to see Carlos Landaberi appointed instead of Tamara. He came out and helped on the.
Thank you, Ellie. I appreciate your comments. All right, do we have another speaker?
Steve, go ahead, please.
Welcome. Welcome, Steve. Welcome, Steve.
Yes, I want to support what Ellie and Bernie said about 6G. Not only is it practical and reasonable, it will give the opportunity for our new chief to connect with the public through a city council meeting and explain the 25 cars and the tasers and why they're necessary. And it would be good to hear him address the public about this. Again, it is not confrontational. It is not in any way, any way, shape, or form anti-police. All it is, is we're requiring or asking that if we're going to spend this much money, this lot of money, is this a valuable expense? Is this something we need to do? And could it be done in another part of the budget or some other portion of funding that we receive for the police department? And it's a very fair request. So I want to compliment both Bernie and Ellie for bringing this up. It really should be a separate presentation. And I'm sure the police chief, because he's a good man, a good decent human being and a good public servant, would be more than happy to do a presentation explaining why this is necessary. This is just good government, folks. This is not anti-police. This is not hating law enforcement. This is simply good government. So I'm hoping that many of you will let the city council and the police chief know that this needs to happen simply because it's a good practice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any other speakers?
Yes. Karina, go ahead, please.
Welcome, Karina.
And from District Five, I also wanted to talk about, excuse me, 6G, specifically because it is taxpayer-funded. I really appreciated what Steve Trujillo had to say. This is not, you know, to be anti-police. But I think transparency is huge, especially when it's coming from taxpayer money, especially when it's occurring in an over-police and system-impacted community. I think transparency is huge. I also think it's very awesome that that someone from the city manager is appointing herself, or excuse me, is being appointed to a partnership, the Housing for Health, and also on the Board of Directors for Community Energy Operations, because I think that is the kind of thinking that the next city manager has to have. That's very innovative. That is where our community lacks a lot of awareness. And I think that's exactly what we need. I also wanted to touch on the homelessness and thank Bakal for reaching out to families in transition and, you know, bridging the gap between the organizations and the city council and making.
Karina, we're focused on our.
Oh, yes. Excuse me. Sorry.
I know. I'm sorry. The consent agenda. Thank you so much.
So thank you very much.
Oh, well, thank you. Okay. Are there any other speakers?
Yes. Yes, I have Killer Clowns.
Hi, Killer Clowns. You want to state your name and what district you live in?
Go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Hi, Killer Clowns. Would you state your name and tell us what district you live in? A lot of tech issues tonight.
Yes. Are you, are you able to unmute? They're not unmuting.
Okay, so we'll move on. Are there any other speakers?
I don't see anyone else at this point. Okay, I think there, are you able to speak now? I think they disappeared.
Okay. All right. I'm going to bring you back to council. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
All right. Is there a second? Paco? Excuse me, Councilman Estrada. Thank you.
Perhaps before we have that vote, maybe we could hear a little report on 6G. Since it's, I'm not advocating pulling it, but maybe just a little more explanation at the request of the public.
Okay, I think we could do that if we have our chief here or someone who can speak to that. And while they're looking, are there any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Chief Zamora is on.
Good evening, Chief Zamora.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. So the, the cars, our 25 vehicles had a system with mounted cameras that would record our contacts with the public, specifically traffic stops for a long time. And that platform that we use was called Data 911. That platform is antiquated, it's failing, and it is unreliable. And we're proposing to go with or to shift to evidence.com, who we've been using for our body worn cameras and our tasers for two and a half years now. That system is polar opposite of Data 911. It's reliable, it's efficient. It allows us to send evidence footage to the DA's office when needed. It allows us to review incidents when complaints come in. So it's just all around, just a better system, and it really just cuts down on the work that we have to do all around. Currently, only three vehicles have cameras in them. And again, that's the reason why we did that was because all of the other cameras were failing. And rather than patch it up and continue to spend money on a system that just was not adequate for the times, we wanted to go with this, with this platform. And again, evidence.com is a system that we've been using for a long time now. And what it does, it just really gives us another angle or a snapshot of an event between a police officer and a community member, specifically critical events. Because when we look at critical events or just any event in policing in general, people want to see what it is that is going on. And the body worn camera offers one, one view of what's going on or what happened. The taser may offer a different view, and yet the, the vehicle camera just offers just more perspective on an incident. So that's kind of what, where we're, where we're going, and it's just a really good system. And as far as the, you know, the, it being a sole source vendor, it, there is no other vendor that can integrate audio and video with our, with this system. And we are awesome. It also, it does, we haven't, we've also been using it with our interview rooms. So it just, rather than having two systems, it's just more efficient and cost-efficient to have it in one system, if that makes sense. So.
Thank you, chief. Before he leaves, is there any other questions from the council for the chief on this particular issue?
I would just thank the chief for speaking up and informing us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Very much appreciate it. All right. Is there anybody who would like to speak on our consent agenda before we go to vote? Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, this is regarding 6M. I just want to point out that staff discussed this resolution with councilmember Estrada and me as a member of the Climate Change Subcommittee. Both of us gave input to strengthen the resolution to what is being presented tonight. And this is just another example of the leadership we're taking to address this climate change crisis.
Yes, Councilwoman Garcia, I know I was in a discussion as well. And I don't know how many other folks on, on the council were in discussion in regards to this. I know it is an important issue. Councilman Dutra.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is on six, or 6L. The resolution appointing the mayor to the Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District. I've been on this committee since 2014. And this is, we are only two voices in the, out of 11-member board, and we do not get alternates. So this is a real important position, and I just want to make sure that, you know, that is completely understood, because this did come up last year when I was the mayor and no one wanted to fill this position. And so I know that Councilwoman Kudos Carter was interested in this position. So I just want to make sure that, you know, whoever takes this, it's two months out of the, it's two days out of the month that we give up. We have one meeting that goes till at least 12:00, 12:30. And then we have to have a committee meeting the following month. Many of our residents depend on this transportation up and down the corridor of Highway One. So we need to make sure that we're giving them full representation. So I just want to make sure that's very clear.
Well, since I'm the one being appointed, yeah, I think it's very clear. I've already had a conversation with our, with the chair, Mayor Donna Lynn of Scotts Valley. And she's apprised us, apprised me of actually of, of how much South County has been represented on those committee meetings and, and in our, and in the regular metro meeting. So thank you very much. I'll take that under advisement. Councilwoman of Kidos Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question. I actually had, my question was for Chief Zamora, but he hopped off before I could ask it. I just had a, thank you, chief. I think the confusion here was just a little bit in the language, so I was just wondering if you could clarify. But I think that if I'm understanding correctly, the language there, the, where the confusion lies is in the word taser. So we're, we're not discussing weapons, we're discussing a system of cameras. Is that correct for the purchase, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so I think that I just wanted to clarify for the public, this is a system of cameras and the taser is a camera system, not a purchase for weapons.
You're absolutely correct. And it's, they're, they're dash-mounted, the cameras on the vehicles. And really what it is, it's just, it just augments our efforts towards transparency and accountability, really.
It seems that the name of the company is Axon, but it was formerly known as Taser International.
Yeah, I think that's the former name of the company. Thank you for clarifying. I think that's where some confusion was coming from, because I was a little bit confused. So I wanted to clarify. Thank you, Chief Zamora.
No problem.
Councilman Hearst?
Yes, I just said, wanted to say with any of these appointments, if they're not working out or people's circumstances change, we can always go back and modify that. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. You are.
Thank you.
If, if need be. I know everybody tries their hardest, but things come up, especially in our pandemic years. Was there any other comments from Councilman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. My comments are also about item 6M. And the councilmember Garcia already said a lot, but I just wanted to thank the members that will be supporting the resolution. And I just really want to thank staff for helping us answer questions, to clarify things. It's really important that, you know, Watsonville is a leader in climate justice and climate action. And I think it's important that we continue to sort of set the tone. And I really appreciate the thoughtful resolution. I think, you know, we really should be divesting from fossil fuels and anything that really is sort of hurting the planet. And, you know, locally, we have our issues. And so I really do appreciate the effort and work put in by the staff for this. So thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Any other council member would like to address anything on the consent? Then we'll call the questions.
Dutra?
Looks like Eduardo's, councilmember Montesino's hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for spotting that. Mayor Protem Montesino, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, we'll have to hold for just one moment.
Yeah, hold on, because I missed the item and my iPad just went blank. One second. I want to pull item, the, if I can. Six, 6L, please?
Six, JKL, appointment of member to, okay, you want to pull 6L?
Yes.
I could point, there's already a motion on the floor. And so I'd like to ask our attorney to clarify if we can now, with this motion, still pull an item?
Good question.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. And I think I might be frozen. I'm sorry if I missed it. I believe there was a second for the motion.
Yes, there was.
Okay, so if Councilmember Estrada, or I'm sorry, if Councilmember Montesino would like to pull an item, I believe that the procedure would be a, looking for my sheet, a substitute motion to only vote on, to pull item, the item that he would like to pull and only vote on that motion. Or I'm sorry, on that item.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
So can I, can I make that effort?
So you're, you're asking, you're saying, was that where that pull the item, but it's a motion to pull the item, and then we have to have a second and a vote to pull the item?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. We vote on the most recent motion first.
Okay, Mayor Protem Montesino, you want to put it in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to pull that item out of the agenda, out of the consent agenda.
Is there a second for this?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to know why it's being pulled to discuss specifically what?
I agree.
From my, my perspective is, is, I think it's a bigger discussions, because we've, you know, ever since Aurelio, you know, left council because of family reasons, we didn't, didn't have anyone for a while. Then Alta, our representative, stepped up and, and did it for, for the few months. And at that time, there was no interest from council members. So I'd just like to have the bigger discussion, you know, because I know Vanessa was also interested. So like, just want to get a better discussion about it.
Well, so I'll make a comment. As mayor, I am appointing myself to this because I am interested. I wasn't able to do it at the time that it came up. And at that time, Mayor Dutra, thank you, let me know that he was interimly appointing the Cabrillo alternate who was sitting there because she kind of knew what was going on, so that there would be a continued stream. I have every intention of making those meetings and being a full participant. And, and I know that we all have different things to do. And although other people may have been interested, we all, based on our appointments that are here, I think it was very fair and spread out amongst everyone. And so I think that's all my comments right now for it. I know I'll do a good job, and I'm very interested in it. And as mayor, I think I'd represent well. Councilman Hearst?
Yes, well, I think I kind of missed the boat on pulling the item and substitute motion. If we get into that all the time, I'm not so sure it'll be productive for the council. And so I'm not going to be supporting the motion. But I do think that, you know, there always needs to be a good dialogue. And I'm sorry that Eduardo didn't pull the item previously, and then we could have had the dialogue rather than a substitute motion. So let's call the vote.
If there's not any other comments, want to make sure everyone has an opportunity? All right, let's call the vote on the substitute motion, which is to pull 6L. So we're only voting to pull 6L.
Okay. Dutra?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes. Yes.
First?
Nope.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kiroz Carter?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
And the motion carries.
Okay, so we're back to our original consent agenda. And the consent agenda, um, with six L being pulled, um, for discussion after we vote on the consent agenda. And at this point, nobody has any other substitute. We're going to go to Madam Clerk, and if you do roll call, please.
Dutra?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kiroz Carter?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, from that, any items removed from the consent agenda, which are, which is six, uh, L? The appointment to, uh, Metro. Are there any comments or discussions or motions?
Well, like I said, uh, well, I'll start with, um,
Mayor Protem Montesino?
Um, like I said, I, you know, this is, you know, um, a very, um, you know, difficult item that I, that I pulled because I know, you know, I work for the transit district and, um, you know, you're, it needs a lot of representation. Um, our community over the years has been, um, you know, left out and, uh, I think, you know, uh, for a lot of years, we used to have staff before 2010, we used to have staff going as representatives, uh, which, um, didn't help the situation. So after, uh, 2010, when I, when I got elected, I, I, Councilmember Dodge, when, uh, and others and, and, and Councilmember Dutra has done wonderful things, uh, you know, uh, getting our committee moving forward. I mean, they've done a lot of renovations to the transit center over the, over just the span of years that they haven't done for a lot of years. But it's taking a lot of showing up, you know, putting pressure and saying, hey, what about Watsonville? What about Watsonville? Whether it was, you know, our trans center or our, you know, our services that they provide. You know, if you look at the services that they have currently, which is just going to be based on one year, we have the electric circulators that are going around our community. That, uh, that were, gather a lot of support for, for us, the first electric buses for our community. But that was, um, because of the, uh, uh, strong commitment for us, uh, our city of Watsonville representatives that have gone and is there. So like I said, my, uh, my intention was to have the bigger discussion and, you know, and not, this has nothing to do, and I hope, I, I, you don't take it, um, um, personal, Miss, Miss Mayor. But it's just, it's a very time commitment. And that's, and that's the only thing that I, that I worried about, you know, uh, we talked about, you know, um, just some of us being, you know, full-time employees, and it's very hard to represent the community. Look, and we just voted for the consent agenda, which had a lot, also a lot of appointments that we, uh, take a lot of time consuming and get educated on all the committees to represent Watsonville. So like I said, that's, that's the only, uh, only worry that I have. So this time is just, you know, just wanted to have that discussion. Um, hopefully, you know, uh, people, um, join in.
Councilman Dutra?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I have the, the same concerns. And I, when I look at Metro, I look at it as another body as large as the City Council. You know, we are, I know we only get two votes. Um, it's really, you know, Aurelio was also a very big voice on Metro. You know, working to get funding for our transit center in South County, um, our electric buses. I've, um, you know, I've gone to DC several times to advocate for South County. Our story is really big because a lot, what, what people don't understand is a lot of the funding that comes in for Metro, they use our numbers in South County to get that funding. So we have to make sure that when that happens, we are getting the services and, um, the resources that we're going after in those grants. And so that's why this is really, really big. I just want to make sure it's very clear. Um, you know, I, my heart is with Metro. I want to make sure that the people that are, you know, being, going up and down this county are getting to Cabrillo College, they're getting to UCSC, um, and they need a huge advocate. And so I want to make sure, and you know, this came up last year when I was the mayor, nobody wanted it. Um, Alta has been a very big voice for us. She gets really involved, um, you know, and I really appreciate her, you know, you know, the action she takes on behalf of South County and Watsonville and all the Paro Valley. So, um, and so that's kind of where I stand. I want to make sure that whoever's going to be taking this position understands the magnitude of what they are getting themselves into. And so, because I do sit on several other boards as well, and, um, they do not take up as much time that this one does. But, um, in order to do this one correctly, um, it's, you're going to get, you get a agenda just as big as the one the City Council gets every, every other week. So, um, that is my concern. Um, and I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that the people of the Paro Valley are being taken care of, and that's where I stand.
All right. Councilwoman Kiroz Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm very passionate about public transit. This is something that I've always been passionate about. I've always advocated for. I've taken public transit ever since I was in high school. And, um, the buses to Aptos High were cut. I've taken public transit. Um, when I was a student in Berkeley, I would take public transit to and from Berkeley to get to school. Um, so I know public transit very, very well. Um, and I would like to continue to advocate for public transit in any capacity that I am able. I've always lived near, I've been fortunate to live near bus stops, and, um, I think we need public, more public transit in Watsonville. Um, I think that with us receiving a bronze award, we should be able to have even more and do even more for pedestrians and bike riders. And Metro and public transit is a huge part of that. Um, so I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Mayor Parker.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hurst?
Yes, I do think that, uh, we need to have the biggest voice we can at Metro. And I think the previous speakers have, uh, indicated that as well. And that's why, you know, the mayor carries a little bit more authority than the council folk. But I'm glad to support anybody who's really committed to improving public transit and showing up at these meetings. And it is a demanding, uh, assignment. And so I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, anyone who's interested is, is really committed to it and will. There's no doubt in my mind that anyone, uh, on the council could fully represent us. But I, I just think that it's, um, the, the, the soapbox that the mayor carries is, is a little bit taller than, uh, just the council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think I'll speak to it. You know, I appreciate everybody's concern. Um, I would not at any time have put myself as appointee on Metro if I didn't have passion and I didn't have concern, uh, for the people of South County. We, we need our Metro. We need more Metro. Um, I too took the bus, uh, through, all through my high school and junior high school years and at UCSC. And, um, I am a firm supporter of Metro. I understand my time commitment. I'm a grown woman of fifty-nine years old, and I manage my life very well. I also manage, um, being a teacher, just like Mayor Dutra was last year, as he served, um, on, uh, on Metro. So I don't have any problem whatsoever making those. And, um, there are other committees, uh, that have not been represented by South County, according to, um, the Chair. And so I would be happy to represent, uh, South County on those other committees as well. But my primary concern is Metro. Um, and this is important to South County. This is important to every, uh, student, every worker, uh, that needs to get across this county, um, on that freeway, uh, and, and get to their jobs. And as we come out of this pandemic, it becomes even more important. I've already been on the phone for the last few days and last week, um, talking to people on Metro. So, um, I am very much, uh, committed to this. So I thank you for your support, everyone, and I mean that in a positive way, um, that you're concerned, but I thank you very much. And if there comes a time, whether it's me or Councilman Dutra, who are finding it difficult for, uh, representation on Metro, we can always bring that back to council for, um, anyone who would be interested in that time commitment. So, uh, thank you. And, um, is there, do we have to have a motion on it, or do we just vote? Madam Clerk?
Um, you need to have a motion.
Okay.
While you're doing with the resolution.
Do we have a motion? All right. Councilman Hurst makes the motion. Do we have a second?
What's the motion?
The motion is to.
Because I didn't hear anything.
The motion is to pass six L, as written.
Six L.
Thank you for the clarifying question. Do we have a second? Thank you, Councilman Estrada. We have a second. And, um, then I'll turn it over to you, Madam Clerk.
Dutra?
No.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Montesino?
No.
Kiroz Carter?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And we move on to our public hearing. Ordinances and Appeals. This will be about Ella's at the airport, uh, the assignment denial appeal. So, um, just a quick, uh, preview before we get started. We'll stick pretty strictly to our time limits and stay focused. When we get, uh, City Council questions, I'm going to preview just, uh, again, uh, before we go further. And, um, uh, so if you have any questions, as you hear the presenters, you can write them down and be ready when it, it's time for us to ask those questions. We'll start off with a staff report by Airport Director Williams.
Here we go. Good evening, everyone. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you, uh, Mayor Parker, uh, Mayor Protem Montesino, uh, council members, interested individuals of the public. Uh, my name is Rayvon Williams. I serve as the, um, Airport Director. I'm here in the airport office, uh, tonight. Uh, it's a, a touch of irony here as I start the presentation. A little more than seven years ago, I was before the City Council relative to Ella's at the airport, the restaurant facility. It was a public meeting, um, and what the public may know and the council members is that prior to that meeting, uh, the airport management and principals at Ella's at the airport met in the long shuttered, um, restaurant. It was closed and we met there. We talked about a partnership and how we can move forward to make the airport for restaurant facility a fly-in destination. It was a competitive process, and what I'm going to do is take you through, um, the rationale for our decision, uh, to try to make sure that everyone understands that we set a set of metrics, uh, before us and that we were holding to those metrics. But let me conclude with this. There is no one here on the staff, it would be disingenuous for us to state that the real, um, success at the airport was the vision, the skill set and the capabilities of Ella and her staff. Clearly, the airport made investments, some that she was a public agency and some that you don't see. But at the end of the day, uh, it was that creativity that allowed them to be a successful airport. And our goal in the best interest of the city is to try to ensure that that continues. So let me see if I could share my screen. And ask you if you can, um, see this. And I have you over here to the side. Okay. So the, the presentation you're going to see is, um, in four basic, uh, pieces, uh, background, proposal signee, assignee analysis, and the recommendation. Uh, in two thousand fourteen, as I noted, the airport had reached out to the Santa Cruz County Small Business Development Center. Uh, we reached out to them as we had in two thousand thirteen, when we originally put a provider in there prior to Ella. And as you can see, we did not just go out and say, hey, let's find someone. There was a, there was a process. Even in the airport discipline, there are requests for proposal processes, and they lay out weighted elements that are required for individuals to be considered. Uh, the competitive process here was, uh, very, very strong. In fact, the first, um, six or seven people that applied, we rejected all of them because they couldn't meet these, um, categories here. And we started the process a second time. That's one of the reasons for the delay. Ella was selected and, uh, the principals at Ella at the airport were selected that second time. And as you'll see in these five points, with the fifth one being, uh, some subbullets, the, uh, the key focus here is not only experience, but we need to be able to determine two key elements. And that is financial wherewithal and the ability to have standing and the ability to be able to not only have a successful business, but have a successful business that will grow. And Ella was selected because they had demonstrated this, and, uh, we, we looked forward into working with them. Uh, so this was in two thousand thirteen. Uh, fast forward a number of years later, on September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, uh, we were informed by the principals at Ella's at the airport that they had identified a potential signee, a Miss AIPAC, doing business at Nancy's at the Airport Cafe. Uh, we looked at this as a good opportunity, and to show our commitment, we did two things immediately. When we got that notice on the twentieth, the first thing we did was we submitted their information, an assignment checklist, and we'll talk about that checklist in a moment. We immediately sent that to the, uh, this is Small Business Development Center, so they could start reviewing it. And what we did is the very next day, we traveled two hundred and some miles to go to that restaurant to get hands on. Because at the end of the day, we're getting ready to make a real serious decision here, and we wanted to have feet on the ground. We wanted to sit at the table. We wanted to see what it looked like. And so myself and the then-city manager traveled to, um, to the facility, uh, on that day. When we looked at the checklist and we start the assignee analysis, there are about, there are eleven items. And these are items that aren't just made up. Hey, where did these come from? Within the lease, and we worked with, um, the principals at Ella to make sure that we were all in agreement with what the elements would be. Because we didn't want to be in a situation in which someone, the, the assignee is chosen by the less see. We, we don't get to choose the assignee. They choose the assignee. But we, it would be disingenuous again to tell the less see, hey, you can get someone, and then have them bring someone back and say, here's who we have, and not have some metrics. And we decided, hey, let's use the same metrics that we use when we had the RP, and that's effectively what these are. You'll note that out of the eleven, only about a fourth of them weren't provided. And, and this, this did send a signal to us that concerned us. What we're looking for when we look at the, at the assignee, uh, assignee, and, and I'm not, I'm not trying to make this a financial management class here. But when we look at, at the, at these, there are just some basic things that, um, that we look at and that we expect to see and that we hope to see in, in an assignee. When it comes to the balance sheet, what we're looking at here is, it's a stat, it's a snapshot, and we expect it to balance. We want to balance between the income, and we want to balance between the expenditures. Because this helps us kind of understand exactly the wherewithal of this, of, of the business concern. And we certainly did that twice before with Ella and the predecessor to, to her. When you look at the P and L, it's the classic statement you hear when people say, well, let's just get to the bottom line. At, at the end of the day, revenues and expenses flow through, and you either have a net profit or a net income, or you have a net loss. The, the one that always concerns us, and we really had, um, a, a focus on this one, was cash flows. I mean, at the end of the day, you got to be able to pay your bills. And you can look at, in the restaurant, restaurant industry, these numbers and these metrics. And you can be able to make an assessment as to where they are and what they're thinking and how they compare to the industry. Uh, it's, it's, it's important to also have a verification of stated capital. I mean, you have to be able to say, yeah, you know, I've got this much money in the bank. Just writing it down on a piece of paper as an application doesn't, doesn't cut it, and we didn't receive that. And then finally, as I noted earlier, what we do is we take these numbers and we work to try to figure out, okay, what are the various ratios? to try to figure out, okay, what are the various ratios, as you kind of see in the pizza over to the side? But, but, but even more so, isn't, it's not the airport management, Rayvon Williams or Alex here on the team that are doing this. What we do is we went to SBD, SBDC. And once again, as soon as we got the information, we forwarded it to them, and this is an email. Some of it's redacted, because I do want to preserve some of the information. It's not my desire here to badmouth anyone or to put anyone on blast, but really to show that we went to them and said, well, what do you see? And when they came back, they listed thought, they listed information for the business that caused us serious concern, because we're trying to picture this same operation and metrics and skill set in a business that is substantially different, from a cafe to casual dining. You know, from, from an airport that has nowhere near the operations we have, an airside and landside business, to one that has an established brand. So when we looked at this, we found that there were a number of things that concerned us. Additionally, and this was one that was tough for all of us here, we tried to read through that business plan, and we found that it was conceptual, but even more so, and more troubling for us, is that it was a business plan that seemed to be copied from three other business plans. I mean, the previous efforts were just repeated, and every time we got a new one, it was less and less and less. We didn't have the references, and we found that, you know, how in the world are we going to look at these, you know, different restaurants being managed with, that are so, well, opposite of each other, so far away? And both the SBDC and myself, we thought that was questionable. So based on the problematic financial statements and some of the missing and incomplete information, stated experience, I forwarded a memo to the then-city manager and tried to explain this. I, you've seen that before, and if you look at that message, you'll see that we did use the SBDC information, but we also did some more homework on our own. I mean, I do talk to other airport managers. We do, they do have restaurants. It's a small community, so we can understand, hey, well, what about this, and questions. We spoke to the individuals there, and it was, it was enough to put in that message to recommend to the city manager. Shortly after that, a couple of days later, I did reach out to the principals at Ella's at the airport's broker and informed him of the reasons why the assignment was denied. Right after that, there was a large kerfuffle relative to, you know, this isn't fair, and we've got issues, and we're going to they weren't happy, even though we were still working to try to negotiate a lease in the holdover period. And I was requested with the help of city staff to create a memo, and we sent it to you that kind of laid out over a six-month period, the logic that we went through. And then on November 19th, the principals at Ella requested this appealed hearing that we're at now. So I would just close with the following. There's, I would hope that you would, that you would come to, come to realize that over the last 11 years, regardless of what's, what you see or read, there's no one at the municipal airport that is really striving to ensure that this city's full-service airport, that we're acting in the best interest of the city. It's not a personal thing. There's no, there's no hate, discontent, or anything along those lines. We have the interest of the city and the airport at mind, both the land side and the air side. We went from an airport that, you know, airport restaurant to a restaurant at the airport, and it was all due to the, the partnership and the types of work and effort that we did. And when, and our requirement, and within those metrics is, you got to use the same metrics you used in 2014, or when you're looking at 2021. We want to do that. But at the same time, we have to realize the restaurant branding, its view, where it is in the, in the community, what it adds, the types of things we do here on the field. It's not the same restaurant that it was back when it was Zuniga's or even Props. We need to make sure that when that baton is passed, and we don't get to determine who's, who is passed to, but we should be able to apply the same metrics so that we are confident that the individuals that are coming in to take over are going to be in a position to be successful. Because if they're not, then I, we would be right back where we were in a very arduous and tumultuous time, and it was, it was, it was tough. And it's tougher on multiple fronts. So that's my, that's my presentation for the night. I appreciate the time. And I'll shut this down and stop sharing and go for questions.
Well, let's see. So we will move on to city council questions for Airport Director Williams at this time. Does anybody have any questions? Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes. Rayvon, you mentioned that only one-fourth of the assessment checklist was provided. Could you tell me what was provided and what was left out?
I'm sorry, Council, Councilperson Garcia. There are 11 elements, and four were not provided. So three-fourths, three-fourths were provided.
Okay, and so what were the four that were not provided?
The four that weren't provided?
Right.
Yeah, so the checklist requires a $5,000 assignment deposit. And the $5,000 assignment deposit is basically, we've got to go to the city attorney, and we've got to do work, and we're charged for that. And so what we want to do is we want to be able to, if they're serious, they're going to provide that, and that's what helps us move forward. Additionally, we need an insurance certificate that, you know, basically, they're going to be able to say, yeah, we've got liability insurance for the place. Assigned personal guarantee. We have, in my tenure here, we have moved toward, you know, look, these businesses are coming in. We need some personal guarantee. And we do that on the commercial side as well as the aviation side. And then finally, the assigned, the assigned assignment document, which is basically an agreement between them, because what's happening is the assignee is basically taking on the lease and all of the responsibilities in there. So we want to make sure that going into this, they know that the landlord has responsibilities, but so do they.
Okay, thank you for that information.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Dutra?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so a few questions. One is, did you use the same process when Ella purchased the restaurant at the airport? This 11 checklist?
Oh, when she, when she applied, as I said in my first slide, she didn't, she didn't purchase it. She was competing for a lease for the restaurant facility. So that first slide, I can go back to that, with all of those elements. She had elements that were, were RFP elements. It wasn't an assignment. The lesssee at that time went bankrupt, and we had to start all over again.
So the Process. You're using, you're using different process on Ella, so you switched the process at some point before now?
Oh, no. No, so let's back up a minute. So the restaurant
Rayvon, Williams, could you go back to that slide while you're talking? Pop that up.
Sure, let me, let me share again. Okay, and you can see that, right?
Yes, we can see that in some recognition.
So, so Councilman Dutra, just bear with me for a minute. So let's go back in time to 2012. In 2012, when Zuniga's left, we didn't have a restaurant, and we didn't, and we didn't have a lesssee. So what we did is we said, okay, we've got to start all over again. And there were people that came to us, the owner of the California Grill, when it was over in the Safeway Shopping Center, said, hey, we'll just run it. And checking with airports and the discipline, I knew that wasn't going to work. So we came up with an RFT process, which is this, what you see here. Two years later, that group went belly up because they didn't have the financial capacity, and they didn't have the business plan nor the restaurant experience. They failed. And it was a very trying time, and I spent weeks in bankruptcy court over in San Jose. When we, just when they left, we had to start over again, after investing $120,000 in the facility, the terminal, the bathrooms. We just had to start over, and so we had another process, and it was this RFTP process. We sent it out. We got about six respondents. None of them fit. So the staff was like, well, we should just pick one, and my comment was, no, we're not just going to pick one. We're going to start over again. So we did. We started over again. This was the RFP that was put out, and as I noted, Ella, Ella scored highest. So the process was different, not switched. It was a RFP process. This is an assignment process. The, where the two come in as the nexus is, they fundamentally are looking for experience, a business plan, financial capacity, credit history. Fundamentally, 70% of what we're looking for is in this assignment. The proposed lease rate, we already have a lease. Tenant side improvements, they're probably done. Competitive of the proposal, there is no proposal, because they're already in there. Does that answer the question?
Well, did, I mean, I, I mean, I just, it concerns me that it was, the process was changed. Why did you not feel that that process was good enough then that you use now? Like, why, if you wanted to have somebody buy this process, why didn't you initially start out with that process and not bring it in when Ella tries to sell?
Okay, so I'm
You did, you went to RFP, you said?
I'm sorry?
You just said that you switched it, that you did a different process. It was an RFP process, you said. So why didn't you, if you believe that this restaurant, you know, should be run by this 11 check item list process, why didn't you use that process originally?
Okay, that's a fair question, absolutely fair question. Let me explain something. Ella had a lease that we signed in 2014, and then we renewed it in 2017. I'm obligated to go by the lease. Ella didn't have a lease in 2014. She competed with eight other people to get a lease. The process we used to compete, the RFP process, request for proposal, says, hey, everybody, we got a restaurant here. Here's all the things. You guys tell me why you're the best bet. She got it. Now, once she's in, she's a lease a lesssee. She's not competing for something any, any longer. She's a lesssee. And now she's going to go ahead and adhere to the terms of the lease. A term in the lease that says, hey, I want to assign this lease to someone else. We say, okay, so now we have to have some metrics in order to allow her to assign the lease. It just makes good common sense that we use similar metrics that we use to pick her, or the one before her, or the one before that, to get into the lease. So it's not a switch of process. We're obligated to adhere to the lease, and that's what we did.
Okay, and who ha, who handles the, you may not know this, Director, but who handles the, the city's rentals? Is this common for you to be handling restaurant rentals? Is, do other departments, I mean, shouldn't this be a development?
No, oh, no, no, no. Oh, absolutely not. One of the challenges that we have here at, so the city owns, the city owns the municipal airport. City owns a municipal airport. The city is, has, is financed, is federally obligated, federally obligated, because they've taken money for the landing facility. The FAA only requires that the city of Watsonville have a landing facility. Runways, taxiways, lights. They don't require hangars. They don't require us to sell fuel. They don't require us to rent property. But they say, you need to do those other things, because we're not giving you any money to exist. So we really can't exist as a landing facility unless we do these other things. So that being the airport director, this office, like many other airports, Palo Alto's, Salinas, we are, and as part of our discipline, we have to be certified. We have to take classes. There's a Monterey is the airport manager's class in development, and we have a clear discipline that we use for leases. And the FAA even has lease requirements. That's what we have to build in. So it couldn't be something for Suzie and those guys to do, because it's within the realms of the FAA. We have lease components that must be in our leases that are FAA-driven. So it's a standard lease agreement. We've run many of leases while we've been, while we've been in here. We've brought many new businesses here to the field under these standard lease policies. And I, well, I would say we've been very successful in managing those leases.
Okay, and then my last question to you is, do you think those four, that Councilmember Garcia, that you clarified with her, the four missing pieces on the checklist, some of these seem pretty simple that you could get, right? If they provided you with these, is this something that you would be, would make you now comfortable with the sale? I mean, $5,000, I mean, if, that doesn't seem like it's a big ask for someone who's going to be purchasing, you know, a probably multi-hundred-thousand-dollar business.
Well, the question, the question that's before me right now is, what was your rationale for denying it? Right, I'm answering what the rationale was for denying it. I mean, these are pretty serious things. I mean, no references, no insurance, right? I mean, they were laid out. They were made very clear. And so, I mean, I'm not, I'm not in a position where I would be able to say, second bite of the apple. I mean, the lease is expired. There's no, there's no, there's no, I don't, I don't have an answer for that other than that.
Okay, so you're not willing to give Ella's sale a second chance, basically, no second bite of the apple? If they, even if they provided these four things?
You know, that's not what we're here to discuss tonight. We're here to discuss the issue before us is whether to grant the appeal or not grant the appeal.
Yeah, and I need this information. I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, no.
Mayor, don't interrupt me. I don't interrupt you. I'm asking questions.
I'm clarifying.
No, I am asking questions. I am asking questions. No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I, I reclaim my time. No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
I'll go back to you.
I'm asking questions.
Director Williams.
I would, I would like, I would, I, I, I believe Councilman Dutra has a valid question, and I would like to at least try to answer it. Providing a $5,000 deposit, three references, signed personal guarantee, insurance certificate, and an assignment document on a scale, it doesn't meet a P and L that isn't congruent, a balance sheet that isn't congruent, an income statement that isn't, that isn't what we believe appropriate, cost of goods that are out of kilter, all the other things that SBC said. When I showed that slide, what SBC found? Just because you come and all of a sudden provide those, that doesn't fix the financials. So my answer to you would be, why would I say, oh, yeah, you can come and provide something that's perfunctory and very easy when the hard lifting you didn't provide originally? And when we explained to you why, and you said, no, we don't agree with you, we said, well, give us something and explain where we're wrong. And they didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions or clarifications? Councilwoman Hurst?
Thank you very much. You know, I do remember the belly landing and also Zuniga's and Props. And I think we're lucky to have success with Ella, but at the same time, it's, it's the Ella's at the airport, and it's not it's, it's not anything personal with Ella or with Miss King or Mr. Angeles. It's, they don't have a lease, as I understand it. So is there a current lease, or is it just a month-to-month?
No, there is, there is no current lease.
So the lease is expired.
That is correct.
So if, if the lease is expired, what is there to assign? What is there to really appeal if there is no lease?
I'd have to turn that over to the city attorney. I don't feel qualified, too qualified to have an opinion, but I think that's
Well, I know it's our building, the city's building, and you're the director of the airport. And we just haven't gotten the, the information, as I understand. And I read the whole staff report and read it through a couple of times, because it is pretty detailed and multi-page. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a lengthy tome on all in its own. And there's certainly lots of legal aspects of it, too, but I guess my basic point is that the parties who have had the lease had a chance to renew it. And tell me if I'm incorrect, had a chance to renew it and did not renew it. And therefore, the lease is not, not in existence. Therefore, there's really nothing to, in fact, appeal.
Director Williams, there's a hand up from Mr. Robert Messenger. So what he is, is he, let's have him introduce himself.
Okay.
And maybe he can answer that question you were referring to in the
Okay, let me, yikes.
Mayor Parker.
Okay.
Members of the city council, I think, believe I can speak to that, the issue that was raised by Councilman Hurst.
Could you, could you introduce yourself?
I'm Robert Messenger with Burke Williams and Sorensen, the city attorney's firm. And I represent and assist the Department of Airports.
Thank you.
So the Ella's at the airport is currently in holdover in a month-to-month tenancy. So there is no lease that could be assigned at this point. We have taken the position that, should it be the council's desire to uphold the appeal, that we would make a request that we bring back a resolution with findings to, to support that, as well as a lease document to be to be approved, considered and approved by the city council so that they could affect that assignment. Does that satisfactorily answer the question, Councilman Hurst?
Well, I'm not sure because if there's nothing to assign, why are we even having an appeal other than the goodwill that the city has? And everybody loves Ella's. And I was there for lunch today and there were wait, people were waiting to get in. So I know it's a going concern. I don't know, you know, why she's selling it or how much she's asking for it. And I don't know if that's any of our public business. But I know that there is no lease, and so the assignment issue is kind of null and void, other than the goodwill that we would like to have somebody in that uh establishment that we've put, as Mr. Williams, Director Williams said, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to improve, and it is much improved over what it was with Belly Landing, Zuniga's and Props. Is you know, is there something to assign? If there's no lease?
Okay, one one would not assign a month-to-month tenancy, and that's why we would recommend bringing back a lease concurrently with the uh resolution approving the appeal if that's the the direction that the council uh chooses.
Thank you, Mr. Messenger. I I think Lowell, you might have, uh, Councilman Hurst, you might have answered your own question. But I'm gonna go on uh to Councilwoman Vanessa Kirros Carter. Councilwoman Kirros Carter? Am I frozen? Can she hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. I think um, Councilmember Kudos Carter might be frozen.
Kind of moving.
She moved.
Somebody want to text her?
My. There she is.
There you are. Okay, there, okay. So Councilwoman Kirros Carter.
I think my internet connection is a bit unstable. Um, thank you, Mayor Parker. Um, hello, Ravon. Um, we haven't formally met. Hello, nice to, nice to meet you. Uh, I just had a question. I was wondering if you could pull up your slides, if you could possibly do that. Um, I had a question about, um, there was a slide that said the applicants were verbally told that they did not meet the requirements. If you could pull that slide back up?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I was just wondering if you could provide some clarification um, as to um, why the applicants weren't um given any kind of like written notice of that. Um, if you could just provide some clarification on why that was a verbal notice and um, why that wasn't outlined in any kind of a written notice?
Sure, sure. Let me just find this. Okay. Um, prior to the prior to the notification on September thirtieth, on September twentieth here, that we had a um, a a potential assignee, the airport engaged a professional real estate agent to act as our representative. And that real estate agent, from that point on, and this was in, I have an email message that notes it was in August. From that point on, that individual served as the conduit to um, the principles of Ella's at the airport. The negotiations, the term sheets, all agreements were done through him. So he would negotiate with them. He'd come back to me. Here's what's going on. What, after we um traveled to um to the location and came back and did our assessment and worked with the SBDC, we informed him of what was going on. I informed the the city manager. And I asked our broker, I said, you know, we we need to tell them. And so we reached out to the uh, the broker, had a conversation with him, a couple of emails exchanged. He was traveling, I was traveling. And he shared our communication with um Ella's at the airport. So from my perspective, we had given due notice. We had the email trails. We informed him why. We told him why. We gave a pretty detailed explanation, very similar to the information we gave Matt as to what was uh, what was going on. There was not a formal letter that we wrote saying that, I cer- I will certainly admit to that. And then the rationale for that was, it was a pretty tenuous situation between the airport and 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 Ella's at the airport, to be honest with you. And I didn't want to do anything to add any fire to it. So all of our communication was through the broker. Our 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 broker with Ella or our broker with the bro- with the um, assignee. I mean, with the, with Ella's broker. Does that answer the question?
A bit. I I was just wondering, there was a slide that just that said specifically something about verbal notice given.
Yeah, that, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's what we see. Yes, right here. In early October, the airport verbally informed.
That's it, yes.
Yeah, mm-hmm. And and he's with Restaurant Realty Company. And uh, we had, we had a number of, we had at least one conversation, maybe two, but a couple of email messages. And he also had a conversation with our broker. And we explained in detail or or our our decision. We sent him, sent him copies of the uh, of the memo. And so he understood what we we were doing. It wasn't as if we weren't communicating with him. In fact, when we communicated with him uh, the decision, we informed him, hey, look, the lease is still viable. And the, and and you guys should be looking for other opportunities. In fact, there's an airport in Livermore that has already expressed an opportunity. And and they 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 want to come down and visit. And so we tried to give them leads so that they would, you know, look at that. But I I'm I'm not into business. I I couldn't be in a position in which it was like, hey, here's what we want you to choose. So we kind of had a, did a hands-off and said, look, you're the broker, but here are some opportunities for you.
And then to clarify, um, after that verbal communication, was there formal written communication that was a follow-up?
Yes, there was.
Okay.
And that was this, that was this memo right here. And it was sent to you, the council members, the city manager, the principals at um, at Ella's at the airport. And 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 it went on to document the decision in in greater detail than um, I mean, it it just went back, you know, to try to take it, to try to paint a picture so that the council members and the principals, I mean, we we had nothing to hide. I mean, we believed everything that we said was true. We had documentation, emails to support it. And we would just, well, we'll just put together a narrative and tell them what happened. Am I still there?
Yeah, you're here.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Cortez Carter, does that answer your questions?
All right, are there any other questions? Uh, Councilman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for your presentation, Director Williams. Um, I'm looking here at the lease. Uh, how many leases did you say that Ella signed before uh, we we got to the present situation?
It would be two leases, one in two thousand fourteen and one in two thousand seventeen.
Okay, I I'm looking at one of the leases and there's a a paragraph here, consent by landlord that sort of clearly plainly lays out um, the sort of uh, the powers, I guess, that that the city has as a landlord. Um, was there, did Ella or Sergio or anybody else part of this um, uh, kind of uh uh, sort of transaction have questions about this paragraph? Did they ask clarifying questions? Ask questions about maybe flexibility or changing it?
And um the answer to that question is yes. Um, but that yes has to be qualified, but when? In two thousand fourteen, when we did the initial lease, that wasn't a question. In two thousand seventeen, when we did the uh, the follow-on lease, there wasn't a question. Uh, I was looking through some notes today, and the first time I noticed that they were questioning that verbiage was in the negotiations with the broker. Right? When we were, when we were negotiating the lease. But one of the points that I told the broker is, the lease that we're trying to get them to sign by October thirtieth is the exact same lease they signed in two thousand seventeen. There 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 are no substantive changes, with the exception that we agreed to compromise. We wanted a percentage of sales. They did not. The broker said, look, Ravon, if you really want to make this work, we need to position it so it will be something that they will be able to sell. And so from our perspective, we'd rather have a four-year lease because we want cycles and we want to renew. It's not that we're kicking you out, but we just want to be able to have that leverage. The broker's point was, if she's gonna sell this place, she needs ten years. But we acquiesced even more. We gave them eleven years. But we still need to be able to have that assignment in there. The reason we gave them eleven years is so they could go to the SBA and have a ten-year loan if they needed one. They wouldn't have, you know, nine years left on the lease. So we made a lot of compromises, but we have to have the ability to um, to be able to assess and apply metrics to an assignee. And they never complained in two thousand fourteen, and they didn't complain in two thousand seventeen. Only in this last iteration did the broker make it known to me that they were complaining and thought that was unfair.
I'm doing my questions, Mayor. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Councilman Estrada. Are there any other questions from council? Okay. Right. Thank you very much, Director Williams, for your time and for um, all your details. And if the appellant would raise their hand so we can bring you into the meeting. If the appellant would raise their hand so we can bring you into the meeting. And begin the Ella's at the airport presentation. So uh, Madam Clerk, do we not have anybody raising their hand?
Um, I have promoted him to panelist already.
Just produce.
Are you ready?
Um, Madame Ella is Keith, gonna speak on on during your timeframe?
Yeah, I believe I'm I'm just figuring mine out. Also, I apologize. It just switched on me.
This is Glenn Falcon. Are you getting any video?
Uh, we see Ella. We don't see you. Now we see you.
Yeah, uh, I'm just gonna take a few minutes here to start off with. First of all, uh, I I noticed Ravon Williams continues to use the, use the uh, term "we" when it's only him that has made these matrix and criteria and made the decision. You have received no expertise from anybody in the restaurant business, small business. Uh, the uh, two consultants that were hired to represent the city, that's Keith Holkey and Keith Holtaway. Uh, Ravon is a good, his resume is complete full of sales, but absolutely no restaurant experience. What he doesn't tell you is that he's been, there's, he refused to meet with Miss Cello and her and the broker. And then issued the uh, his decision in November. What he doesn't tell you is that both parties, Ella and the assignee, have approved the proposed lease. All we're waiting for is approval of the of the assignment. The assignment uh, is uh, part of this appeal. And the reason you need to look at the packet that I added to the council packet, it shows a better breakdown and chronology of what actually happened. So the question Councilman Hurst asked, well, if there's no lease, well, the lease was there, ready and ready to go before the city council. It didn't get show up until November. The earlier lease expired at the end of October. We, and the decision not to uh, let the assignment go to Cello was dated November sometime other in writing. Uh, what he doesn't tell you also is that the city has been meeting two or three times with Cello and the broker. And all the documents, the funds, the five thousand, the insurance, the guarantees, all of that have been provided. So what you have is a restaurant that is going that if the assignment is agreed to, will continue as Ella's, same staff, city employees, city work, uh, living employees, same menu, same goodwill at a higher rent than what was proposed before. So everything goes on nice and smooth if the assignment is approved. And you're listening to Mr. Williams, the director, that has no restaurant experience whatsoever. And he's made up a metrics that is unsupportable when you look at the true facts of what Cello has provided the city to get the assignment. Now, you have some options. I don't think this restaurant is going to continue if the assignment is not approved. So you're gonna end up with a a facility empty for who knows how long. And you're gonna listen to a director that's already cost the city over eight hundred thousand dollars for his decision to put barricades in front of an access ramp. That's part of your packet now, too. Follow those, follow the director's decision and judgment in this case, and you'll go down the same path. Or, as Councilman Hurst mentioned earlier, find solutions. The solutions is the are easy. You approve the assignee. She has all that information submitted. You have both, all three of the restaurant people approving her. But they won't submit that report. And uh, life goes on at higher rent. No interruption. And uh, you have a fantastic restaurant continuing. And I understand that she's moving down to this area to take over the restaurant. I cede my time over to Ella.
Ella? There we go. Am I on? Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Parker and and uh, city council. Uh, yeah, I'll I'll just piggyback onto onto Glenn and and also um, give a little bit more flushing out of details on that. And just to remind everyone and council member Lowell first, uh, we got the lease from the city after our lease expired. So once again, I did not see a lease from the city of Watsonville. I signed a letter of intent, but they did not give it to me until after my lease was expired, five days after, to be exact. So there's that. Um, we did get the new assignee, the assignee here, Cello, to the city of Watsonville on September twentieth, and by September twenty-seventh, only seven days later, they had already declined her. I'm not certain how fast you're able to do things, but that was pretty good speed for the city of Watsonville. I don't think that you actually accurately looked at her. Yeah, you might have flown there. But that does not make the medal. Do not judge a book by its cover. And she was picking up our restaurant strong. You know, we've been in the city now for fifteen years. I know how to pass off restaurants. I did a really good job with the girls over at the cafe that's small, but that is part of the business um, agreement. When I sell it to her, that I am responsible for holding her hands for sixty days. So there's that. She is moving to the area. So that's another thing that it doesn't matter. She's doing our concept. So what they saw up there, uh, the one thing that I have heard is that she's resourceful, hardworking, uh, has money in the bank. She's got six months worth of reserves. That's more than what we had when we came to you guys. She's has restaurants in her, in her background, all only exclusively restaurants. They cite her for uh, having two jobs at once. EK, EY. That's not a big deal. A lot of us have to do with that, especially hard work and single women. So there's that. Uh, when we wh- what I feel the most challenge is, is that the metrics that are being held to this standard are more metrics based on what the SBA alone or a lender would be looking at. And I understand that because obviously, naturally, you go to your strengths. The SBDC is there to help people get ready to potentially get a loan. And that's what a lot of people go to the SBDC for. But for us, she doesn't need that. She's got money in the bank. She's got restaurant experience. She has a restaurant. It's on autopilot. The main thing that I feel, why I feel like we have been singled out, I do feel that we've been singled out, is because when I went over uh, Mr. Williams' head with a couple items, but specifically after the first year and our tent, I feel that at that point, the city of Watsonville shifted for me. And I have been working with the city of Watsonville now for twenty years. We've had a rest, we've had businesses here for twenty years. I felt that from that point on, we got uh, we got stalled. We got arbitrary decisions put on us. And uh, that tent issue gave me a real clear indication. And yes, I didn't bring it up when I renewed back in two thousand seventeen because it wasn't. And yes, I didn't bring it up when I renewed back in 2017 because it wasn't an issue. But guess what? In 2020, November 2020, during COVID, I had someone that was interested in buying the restaurant. And Rayvon Williams called me into his office and said, as a matter of fact, I think in the SBDC feels like you're undervaluing your bus- business and that you should be selling this for $495,000. And we're just not getting a good feeling off of these people. And I, at that point, partnered with the city. I said, I want to hear more. All right. I'm Will. I want to make sure that this restaurant stays here. We're here for the community. How can we do that? And how I felt like the city of Watsonville could have helped us was, remember, that was 2020, right in the middle of, in the absolute brink of COVID and December of 2020. And he said, just work with me and we're gonna get with the SBDC. We're gonna help you build your business back up. When we went to the negotiating table with that, we found out that it wasn't quite aligned with what they, what Rayvon Williams ultimately wanted to help us with our metrics. He wanted to get into our books. And that's what stalled the last one. He said, I'd like to see Ella's uh, Ella's at the airport's business tax returns. And I said, no, that's that's not on part of the lease assignment. I don't see why you need that. Then again, when we came to needing to renew this lease, we gave him, we were back together again. He said, work, we'll, city of Watsonville will help you promote your business and we feel like you can value it for more. In February, we sat down with him and we gave him a verbal that we were going to extend our lease and continue on because we're working together. But by April, I did not very well. I did not give a written. And at that point, we went to renegotiate. All of this is just being said because there are things that happen that are it seems that they are um, underhanded to get to a another goal. And I feel that the underhandedness was attempt to try to get into my books again because that is the first thing that Rayvon really Williams suggested with our lease and negotiation, that we would get a lower rate monthly if we would just open up our books and show our sales each month. And once again, I said, no, this is not. I I appreciated when Ruben Helling came in because yes, he finally helped Rayvon see that. But the other very important things, there were two crucial things on it. I said, I don't want this sole and unfettered discretion and that the landlord can object on any other grounds. Now they're proposing that that is being removed. So it actually did. They're they're saying, yeah, we could remove that. Well then, why did we get through, go through all this fight for so long? Very challenging, very challenging. She's moving to the area, guys. Uh, if you, if you really believe in Ella's, you know, allow this baton to be passed. It does not take a rocket science to run a restaurant. And I understand that her metrics might be a little bit different, but she is a hardworking woman. She's got capital. She's got restaurant experience. There are very few of those unless, of course, actually, Rayvon also mentioned that uh, he told us about other potential people. That was only found out on that November 12th memo that he sent to the city council. My uh, business manager did not receive any information. The the business broker didn't receive that information and Ruben Helling said he had no information based on that. He could not uh, respond to that or even comment on who those people were. Only Rayvon knew. And interesting also that we got a call today from the Fish House for to our business broker, yet we met with the Fish House before we even met with Cello with this new assignee. So if they wanted to be in backup position, why didn't they put an offer in? I'm gonna defer the rest of my time to Keith Simpson. Does he have his hand up?
What's his name?
I'm mute. What else do I do? Is that it? Start video? Will that work?
We we can, we can hear you.
Hey, work. Look at that. Marvelous. Hi, uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. Um, I've taken loads of notes, listening to everyone speaking, so please bear with me because I'm gonna be a little bit all over the place as I'm just trying to uh, capture everybody here.
Uh, Mr. Simpson, can you identify who you are?
Yes, certainly. Sorry. My name is Keith Simpson. I'm a restaurant broker for the last 16 years with Restaurant Realty Company. I've been in the restaurant business for 48 years. I've owned three restaurants of my own. Have. I sold the last one in 2012. So I deal with landlords, I deal with SBA banks, I deal with buyers, sellers, I deal with all sorts of people at all different times and every deal is different. But this process, I've never seen such an arduous process. Mr. Williams talks about insurance. You don't get insurance until you're the tenant. Personal guarantee, that will go with the lease. The lease will have a personal guarantee. What's the personal guarantee at this stage? $5,000 for a lease assignment. That would be paid at the time of the lease assignment. Uh, references, yes, we did give. I remember there were two references that I can think of and there probably was a third. Um, I wrote to Rayvon Mart, Rayvon Williams twice. He never replied to me. Never, never courtesy to respond to my emails, which were very detailed at the time. This is $165,000 sale. This is not a million dollar business. This arduous process is more than I do with an SBA bank and I did five SBA loans that were just recently closed $3.2 million of restaurants in Monterey, just down the or up the road from you. Uh, I just sold a restaurant ex- almost identical to Ella's at Tahoe Airport. The city of South Lake Tahoe wanted personal financial information and a resume, period. That was it. The the buyer, the buyer's in. None of this, none of this uh, business plan. That's what an SBA bank wants. None of this uh, tax returns of Ella's or or Ms. APAC's, none of those uh, ever wanted. This is a private business. This is, you're the landlord, you're increasing the rent and you all, you want your rent. Ella has built up a fantastic business since 2014. The hardest thing is to build the business. To keep the train on the track is simple because she's not changing the menu, she's not changing the employees, she's got Ella holding her hand for two months if that's needed. And she's going to run a very successful restaurant.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Uh, the time has run out. Um, and we're gonna move to our next step, which is, I guess, questions. So stay here because they may actually have questions of you. And we'll go to, find my place on it. We'll go to um, city council questions for the appellants. And um, could, uh, is it Ella or Glenn Falcon who'll designate who answers what? So you guys. Okay, based on the questions. So um, uh, Councilwoman Garcia. Let's start with you.
I have uh, two questions. One is for clarification. Several times I read in the report that EATA did not provide additional information to oppose the airport director's claim of insufficiency, if insufficiently, meeting the lease requirements. I'm wondering, uh, is that information that they were requesting still missing or can you give it to us tonight? Asking you.
So who will speak to that? Uh, Elle, if you're talking, you're on mute.
Am I unmute now?
Yep, you are unmuted.
Thank you. So I want to make sure that I'm ass- answering your question correctly, Ms. Garcia. Um, I'm not certain what is missing besides the assignment information that Rayvon Williams suggested out first. Uh, but my understanding is that Cello APAC, the assignee, did have the financial stability. She has the money in the bank. She has the business acumen. She has all the restaurant experience needed. Um, she has the ability to run a restaurant and she's also buying our restaurant specifically. And she's also buying our restaurant specifically.
Ask Rayvon.
We lost you.
No, we can hear her. Can you hear me? Somebody needs to text Rebecca.
Okay, it was my laptop again.
Okay, you can hear us now, Rebecca?
No, I can hear you.
Okay, very good, Ella.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and ask my second question. Uh, I'm not sure who sent the letter, but the council members received a letter this afternoon and it states, quote, landlord shall have the sole and unfettered discretion to approve or reject any sublease or assignment. Where did that language come from?
Yeah, are you there? That is my, from directly from my lease. And then if you continue on, there's one more uh, line right after that that many times is not left, uh, is not given to the council. But it says landlord may object on any other grounds.
And so then, uh, if that's the case, it's on your lease, then Raven, how do you respond to that?
We won't have response, sorry.
I'm not certain if he's able to respond, but that's the one thing that we uh, we brought forward with Ruben Hellig multiple times, saying this is uh, onerous language on any uh, private business owner. It was really tying our hands with the ability to sell our restaurant because then there are too many uh, what ifs that come into play with the human heart. And they were not sticking to just bare tax, which is, she's got the money in the bank, she's got the ability to run a restaurant. And uh, and the business uh, broker that the city of Watsonville hired was uh, also also gave us thumbs up when he reviewed her package. So I do want to bring that to the council as well. Ruben uh, Hellig was positive and felt that she was on the 27th, actually, the day that Rayvon was drafting this letter of declination, we got an email from Ruben Hellig saying, uh, it all looks good. The city's already reviewed her and this is, I'm almost quoting it. The uh, it all looks good. The city has already reviewed her financials. And uh, next Wednesday, which they had a meeting uh, planned with Rayvon, is gonna be more of just a meet and greet. So then unfortunately, that never happened.
And that email from uh, Holcik uh, is in the packet that I submitted uh, uh, that failed to make it in the earlier packet, whoever submitted that. So uh, his approval is in there. All you have to do is take a look at it and why they didn't bring him up, I have no idea other than you know, like if Rayvon is trying to sell you something, be careful what you buy.
I have a question, uh, really quickly, uh, Councilwoman Garcia, uh, to our city attorney. Um, just as uh, part of procedure, um, during the city council questions, now are we focusing it on the appellants? And only the appellants?
The city council can ask questions of whomever it would like.
Okay, I just wanted to know because Councilwoman Garcia had a question that might have been answered um, by Director Williams and uh, and then later, um, during our city council deliberation, can we still ask questions at that time? Okay, good. Okay, so we'll continue. Uh, Councilwoman Garcia, did you have a further question?
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience on that. Are there any other councilmen or women who would like to ask a question? Oh, Councilwoman Dutra.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. Um, I think this probably would go to Ella. Um, would the menu stay the sa- is everything being transferred over? I like identically, will the new owner have the same menu? Will you train them in that menu? Um, will the restaurant basically be transferred over and a small business will be, um, you know, will be saved in our community or is it, are they starting over? Can you?
No, thank you, Jimmy. I understand your question. Uh, yes, she is buying uh, everything. She's buying the recipes. She's buying the the theme. She's buying every everything that is ours, all the everything. She's buying it all. And so that is also part of it. She gets the Ella Bible. Um, and the Ella Bible has all the recipes in it, how to make things, how to uh, send out your specials, how to talk on Instagram, all of that stuff. It is uh, it is a comprehensive package that is she's purchasing for only 165K. Um, it is, then that's what we've been trying to say all along. Not only that, but we're not going anywhere. We are so committed to the city of Watsonville. You think honestly, you, that's where I just think, wow, you know, um, you guys are not seeing the forest for the trees sometimes because I am, I want that restaurant to succeed only because I'm lazy and don't want to cook all the time. You know what I mean? I really love our food, but I'm also at a crossroads where I am, I cannot carry both anymore. So I have to be able to sell my business and the city of Watsonville has shackled my hands for me to be able to sell my business to a normal human being. This is not someone, we are not asking the city to give money. We are not asking for that. And that 120,000 I wanted to also address that was brought up earlier. That was actually done on the previous people that were in the restaurant. I appreciate all the things that have been done for us, but that 120K was not built, uh, put to a benefit ours. We put in our money to make Ella's uh, the next, the next generation. And that is what she's buying. She is buying that.
And by the way, she's gonna be keeping the same name. And it'll be basically a turnkey operation.
Alright, thank you. I have two more questions and I don't know if maybe staff might have to answer this. Is it common for us to use that language, which I do have to agree is um, really strong that, you know, that we have the sole right to allow, whether or not we allow someone to sell a prop, sell a business? Is that something we use often in Watts, the city of Watsonville?
That is the language in our current lease agreement that was signed by uh, Ms. Kim. So that language is language that has been previously approved and in the lease that she's signing 2017.
But do we use that with other people, like other leases we have? So, so other people sign that lease with that, that, that language? Can you give me an example? All the other airport leases?
Well, it's been removed from the lease that's currently pending. So uh, that discretion, and again, it's not the landlord, it's basically you've given Rayvon Williams complete and utter final discretion other than this appeal.
And 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 just as a response to that, um, it had Councilman Dutra's question was, had it been signed by others? It's been signed twice by the principals at Ella's at the airport. It's been signed by all the current leaseholders. The current lease right now, Councilman Dutra, that we have, that assignment clause is in it for the aviation leases and for the, and for the commercial leases. And any of those leases that are signed, any, any issue that comes up or pushback is not my sole responsibility or so-called. Anyone can go through this process. It's the city of Watsonville. It's you as the, as the leaders that are fundamentally making this. And I'm just your agent and and working here under the guidance of regulations, industry practices and disciplines.
Any of you had, um, Director, have you had any other businesses sell before? Is this the first that you've seen this or have you experienced anything like this before?
We have had other businesses attempt to assign their leases. Um, they have a, they have, they have reached out to individuals and engaged them and had those individuals come into the office. And we have said, hey, this looks good, only to have the, that assignee say at the last minute, no, we don't want, we don't want them. We've had businesses come in to do assignments in which the assignee seemed to be a good fit, but they couldn't get, they couldn't come to financial terms with the person that was assigning it. We've had individual businesses come in and work and assignee with an individual that had um, substantial financial wherewithal, but we couldn't get, we couldn't get with SBDC a confirmation that they had the experience. And into SBDC's point, there was a comment made about who we went through as consultants. The the individual that we used in 2013, 2014, when when uh, we brought in the principals from Ella's at the airport is an individual that's well respected in the industry and in Santa Cruz and was recommended by multiple resources that we found to be very capable and competent.
Thank you. And my last question is, um, just for clarification as well. Um, when Director Williams gave his uh, uh, presentation, he said four things were missing out of the 11 checkmark list. When Mr. Falcon Falcon said, Mr. Falcon said that they have all been provided. And then I heard Mr. Um, uh, is it Simpkins?
Simpson.
Simpson, sorry. Mr. Simpson said that those items are provided at close. So can I understand what, what is?
I can, I can only say that when we receive the packet, the checklist packet, the items, that those items were not included. And I, and and to this date, I haven't seen any references. I don't, I don't, I don't understand the uh, requirement. I don't understand his statement about the assignment. We, we had an assignment within, we had a business, a leasehold that was interested in working an assignment. And the assign, the leasehold here on the field split the cost of the assignment. with the person that was going to purchase it. And those funds went into the city coffers and stayed there in that assignee's name until we had all our work done, because we do administrative stuff and we get to, we get to charge that. So I'm, I'm not sure what he's, what he's talking about. But in our instance, we do bring those dollars in for, for payment. And we haven't seen any, I haven't signed off on any or seen any in our accountants.
Ella, you can speak.
Oh, no, excuse me. Thank you, Councilwoman Dutra. Councilman Eduardo Montesino, actually Mayor Protem Montesino, you have a question? And Ella, we will get back to you.
Yeah, I have a question. So, so for clarity for myself, maybe for others. So what happens if the, the appeal gets denied? What happens? Can somebody tell me what happens?
Sure, I can, I can help. If the appeal is denied, trying to keep the party straight in my mind, if the appeal is denied, the issue becomes moot. If you're asking what happens with the space at the airport, I'll defer to Director Williams on that.
And maybe I can answer part of that question.
Well, since you deferred to me, I'd like to go ahead and.
Yes, thank you very much, Director Williams.
I mean, I'm sorry to step on Mr. Falcon, that's very.
No, you weren't. Yeah, that's appropriate, and he can comment afterward.
In, 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 in the event, Mayor Protem Montesino, we would go right back to the very third slide I showed you. We would go back in history to 2014. We would issue an RFP. We would, and, and we would do it just, we would, we would just dust it off. We'd go right out into the vault. We'd put ads in the Paharonian, the Santa Cruz newspaper, airport manager sites. We would issue an RFP. That RFP would be open for the entire, anyone that wants to come in, including Ms. Cello, if she sees, sees fit. And we would start the process over again.
And then I imagine we get sued. I can figure that. But what happens if the other way? You know, if, if we favor the restaurant? Or Ella?
Then life goes on. We dismiss all claims in the future. We give a CC 1542. You can ask the city attorney about that waiver of any potential claims. The restaurant continues just like it has been, but under new management. And like Councilman Hurst said earlier, looking for solutions. That's the simple, easy solution. Or you can do it the hard way and follow Raven's advice. It took him seven days without any expertise to make a decision without even meeting with Cello.
Okay.
To deny her.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor Protem Montesino, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, just like, I got that practical, but Ray, what does that look like in your, your world? You know, if we, if we favor the pen?
If, if, if you, if, I, I, I serve at the pleasure of the council. So.
I, I just understand, but I just want to hear you from practicality. I mean, are we signing documents? Are we, are, are, I mean, what's the, what are the steps that have to be taken?
I, I, I would, I would have to defer to the attorneys. I mean, they're, they're going to have to talk us through the steps of that.
So in that sense, let me call on Samantha Zutler, our city attorney.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Montesino, to answer your first question that Mr. Falcon answered, I appreciate your response, but the city has counsel of its own. You know, the metrics that Director Williams used to make his decision here are in the lease that Ms. King signed. And I understand that there's a dispute over how those metrics were applied, but the actual metrics are in the lease. And the lease also does say that the council, that the city has discretion about how to apply those metrics. So if the city were to deny the appeal here, I appreciate Mr. Falcon's threats to sue the city. But if the city were to simply deny the appeal, it would be exercising the discretion that is awarded to it in the lease that Ms. King signed. In answer to your practical question about sort of what happens now, if we were to grant the appeal, we would need to, as Councilmember Hurst pointed out, at this point, Ms. King does not have an active lease. And so we would need to negotiate and agree upon a lease with Ms. King. And then we would bring back at a future meeting, we would want to understand why the council wishes to grant the appeal, so that we could bring back to you at a subsequent meeting, a resolution that includes findings supporting that decision. And then we would need to bring back to you a lease so that Ms. King could sign it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, is that Mayor Protem, are you good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Are there any other council members that would like to ask a question? Councilman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Falcon, Ella, Mr. Simpson, for your presentation. I know these are very difficult negotiations, but my question is, did at any point Director Williams throughout these negotiations, did he abuse his authority? Did he break any laws? Was there anything illegal that he did? That, that, I mean, it, it just sounds like Director Williams was doing his job. So I, I guess, I, I'd like to know if there, there was anything like that that went, that happened.
Councilman Estrada, you're, you're asking for statements of fact?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And is he asking that of, of me, Councilman?
Anybody that would like to respond.
Yeah. Oh, well, no, in regards to the, in regards to whether or not he did anything that was illegal. The abuse of the authority, I, I do feel that it is unfortunately more onerous because, once again, the things that even he cited right now are not, yes or no, they're, those are not issues that could be not easily overcome. The assignment clause, the, her $5,000, those things are minute and, and not a day, a game changer or a deal breaker. So why is she being declined? Because her financials didn't, he wondered what, where she was with, why she was paid a certain amount. Once again, these are, this is SBA tactics.
I'm going to, I'm going to refocus, I'm going to refocus back to the question, Ella. The question was, did he, as a statement of fact, abuse his authority?
But once again, I just don't feel, how, how could he, how could he have been, how could he have not abused his authority if within seven days he was able to render a decision on this to a woman without looking at her stuff, without getting anything more than a temperature feel, and then immediately declined her?
Okay, thank you. Councilman Estrada, does that answer your question?
I don't think so. I, I just want to know whether or not the director acted within his authority.
Well, Director Williams, can we have your perspective on this?
Most, most, most certain, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I called on you.
I was interrupting. I was interrupting, Mayor. May, may I speak on this, on this one point about Director Williams performing?
If Director Williams wishes you to speak?
I yield.
Yep, then you can go right ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to share with the council that in this process, Director William, like you said, he serves at the pleasure of the council and, and ultimately the lease that Ms. King signed came to the council for your review and approval. So, and, and the, all the stated facts as to what we look at into an assigme, regardless of who that person is, have been pre-stated in the lease that was signed. So simply, Director Williams exercised his right to look at what are the conditions that are pre-stated in the signed lease and use that metric to evaluate the assigme that Ms. King brought forward. With that, with that said, I just want to remind the council that we did this in partnership, not with Director Williams working alone. But we consulted with a SBDC consultant who has the expertise to look at restaurant businesses and look at their financials and feasibility. And yes, it was, it was a quick turnaround and it, but sufficient time to look at the information that was submitted. And I know Director William took it upon himself to immediately fly over, just to really trying to support the long-term desire that Ms. King has had to assign the business. This is not a conversation that is new or that just happened in September. It's just been an ongoing conversation, as Ella alluded to. Raven proposed to establish a partnership and really find the right assigme for this business. So there was also mentioned about Ruben Helig. Ruben really came in to facilitate the terms of the lease. He is not qualified, nor was he hired by the city to have an opinion whether an assigme is qualified or not. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, because that was not Ruben Helig's focus, nor are his expertise.
Could you identify who Ruben Helig is for this discussion?
Is, is the person that helped Raven negotiate the lease terms with Ms. King for the, for the proposed, not, never signed lease assignment. So.
He's the broker that worked with the city?
The broker that worked with the city that Ella, a few minutes ago, referenced that he had said everything looked good, or like whatever looked good for Ruben is great, but Ruben was not hired nor has the expertise to opine on, on that there, in that specific situation. SBDC consultant that Raven, that supported Raven's analysis of this business is the person who has the expertise. So that's who Director William worked with the experts that were available to the city in order to make his decision. So I just want to make sure that I answer Councilmember Estrada's question, giving perspective of the support that he's had.
So did anyone act outside their given authority? Everyone?
I don't, I don't believe that is the case, Councilmember Estrada. I believe everyone acted within their authority, within the stated guidelines that we had on their design lease that Ms. King had signed.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other council members with questions at this time?
I have a question.
Okay, but no one else has a question, because then we're starting over again. Oh, Councilman Hurst.
Thank you for calling on me, Mayor. It's the same question I asked before that I, that you thought I answered, but I didn't hear it. The question is, Ella's been working on this for a long time. Why didn't she sign the lease when it was available? Why are we even here when there is no lease in force? What is there to assign?
Interim City Manager.
Why wasn't the lease signed?
We, we had agreement, we had reached agreement with Ms. King on, on the terms of the lease that was back in September. A lease was drafted and we were expecting signature. I believe that was almost coming to the council twice, Raven.
Correct.
For signature. And both times we had, Ms. King did not execute signing the lease that was, that she had already agreed to all the terms prior to drafting the lease. There was a term shift that was developed that both Ms. King and Sergio had signed and agreed on. At, at least was drafted, but was never signed. So therefore, time sort of was running, and, and there's two processes, right, that were running concurrently. One was the renewal of the lease, because we were reaching kind of like the end of the current 2017 lease. But then there's, there's that other assignment question that was happening in parallel, right? But neither one of them got to the finish line on time, I would, I would describe it.
Well, thank you very much. I, I think that all of this is avoidable, and we really didn't have to be here tonight. Had Ella signed the lease, it would have been easy for her to have the, have the lease, assign it to Ms. Apack or whoever was qualified. But it appears that from the documents that Ms. Apack hasn't submitted. And, and I, you know, and there's a kind of a communication gap here somewhere that, that Mr. Williams has not received the information that he needs to make the decision to okay the assignment. And there again, there's no, nothing to assign because Ella didn't sign the lease.
Okay, so I'm going to refocus this a little bit. We are at the place where we're, the city council is asking questions and can specify who they would like to answer or who they would not, you know, who specifically, or if it's a general question. And then we can go through it. And then we do need to hear from the public. So I'd like that recognized, and then we are going to have a city council deliberations. So at this time, if you are a city council member and you have clarifying questions that you would like to ask in regards to the presentations, then this is when you'd ask him. I'm sorry, could you like mute your microphone? Thank you so much. So, Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, I want to follow up on Laurel's comments and ask Ella, why didn't you sign the lease?
I did not have the lease, Ms. Garcia, until after our lease had expired. We signed the letter of intent on August 30th. August 30th, we signed the letter of intent. It took the city of Watsonville until November 4th, exactly five days after our lease had expired, to get us a lease to even review, the actual lease. Because the letter of intent is just like a one-page document that kind of goes over and outlines the lease. And we went back and forth with that, but finally ratified it. Even Raven Williams had signed it before we even signed it on August 30th. So once again, to our point, I feel that we're being pushed out because I didn't even have a lease to sign until after my lease had expired.
Well, when it was presented to you, why didn't you sign it then?
At that point, we were, well, think about, think about for, for you. At that point, now we have two months going with a, and this is now November 4th. We still had not gotten anything from Raven Williams, nothing in writing, like you all now, now know. It was just all verbal to Keith Simpson, but only verbal once, that she just didn't make the financial standards, never any sort of details, nothing did we get. The only time that we finally got something was on November 12th, when he sent a memo to everyone on the city council of the decline. And then also in that same email or memo, he referenced other people that were interested in purchasing our restaurant. But we had never, Keith Simpson did not get that information. It was not passed to us. It was actually passed to the city council first as to who was calling Raven Williams and courting him for our space. But we did not get that information from him. I only read it in the memo.
Okay, so thank you. The question was in regards to, from Councilwoman Garcia, you know, why didn't you sign the lease? So I gathered that was an explanation. Director Williams, do you have any comment on that?
Yes, I do. Yes, we have a, in your packet, in one of the original packets, there's the, the letter of, the, the agreed-upon terms between the principals at Ella, the Ella at the airport and myself. And that was signed in September. It's in your packet. So where this fictitious date of August comes up, I'd like to see. If you, if you look in the packets we sent you, it shows.
DocuSign was August 30th.
If you look at the document, it has their signature and underneath it has date. And it has my signature and a date. And I believe the technology in DocuSign only applies that date when the signature is applied. That was sent to you earlier. I, I do want to just stop right here for one moment and, and try to just do an overall. I, I'm, I'm trying to avoid, as best I can, any finger pointing or, you know, name-calling or anything like that. That's, that's not what I want to do. But I can't help but comment that there are just a number of statements that are fundamentally not true. Right? I mean, and, and, and I don't, and then I'm not trying to call people out, but there are just fundamental statements that are not true, and I would like to. And I would like to just reiterate that our decisions were made based on the information that was supplied. There's a big focus here about it was only seven days. One of the reasons that the information was received on a Monday, we visited on a Tuesday. We had the information Tuesday night. I had been known to be here till late at night. It didn't take long to read through information that was so scarce and so incomplete and 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 didn't have certain elements. And to go to SDBC and ask them, are you seeing the same thing I'm seeing? And for them to say, there's there's not a lot of here, Rayvon, and what we do have, it's very concerning.
Okay, I'm going to go back to council and a councilwoman, uh Councilwoman Garcia, did we, uh did you have a second question?
No.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman Kiroz Carter.
Thank you, Mayor Broker. Director Williams, um I have a question for you. I'm wondering if there is a new um a new applicant who comes through, would they be going through the same leasing process um with the same requirements that Ella is going through? Would that process be exactly the same? Is this the same process would be, would we be going through the same issue? Again, is my question.
I I I go back to the same question that um I tried to answer with Councilman Dutra and 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 I may be misunderstanding. So I'm going to give you two perspectives. When you say will we go through the same process, we would go to an RFP process. So these are the slides that were at the very beginning. We we would, we would just go through that, we make it public, we publish it in the paper, they would come by and pick this up. We would review it, the whole rank and stack them, have them come out, walk through, visit, check their references, check their financials. Ask them to create a business plan that had the depth of marketing, menu, costing, looking at the area, who's your customer? Basically, we'd go through the same thing, which is what we did in 2014. And that Ella, the principles that ETA did well on. If we, if there was a lease and it was like, well, no, you're, here's a lease and we want you to assign it, we would, we would apply the same checklist. We're not changing to, I appreciate Councilman Estrada's role. We have for the last months kept asking ourselves, did we follow our own rules? Did we stick to the lease? Did we hold the elements and were we consistent? And I can most certainly assure you, we were. And we would do either one of those, it'd either be an RFP and if the council said, we would use the same metrics. But and if we got the same response similar to this, I would deny it.
Uh uh Ms. Zettler, our city attorney, would you like to comment on that?
The question that council uh member Kuros Carter asked has come up a couple of times, so I just want to make sure that the that the answer is clear. Um there are two separate um there are two separate requests or two separate actions here that follow two separate procedures. One is if the city leases property, which is what I think your question was about, if we end up going through this process again, what would happen? Um the city would lease the property. That goes through an RFP process. That has its own set, an RFP process has its own set of criteria that Director Williams was talking about in the beginning. It would be the same criteria that was applied to Ella when she Ella's when she first leased the property. Once a lease is established, that lease includes certain terms. One of those terms is about assigning the lease to another party. That, a request to assign the lease is what Ella's is now making of the city. That request is governed by a separate process that is laid out in the lease. That is separate from the RFP process. So it's not that the city changed the process midway. It's that there are two separate requests that are governed by two separate procedures.
Thank you. Um uh Councilwoman Kiroz Carter, um did you have a follow-up question?
No, thank you, Director Williams and um city attorney for the clarification.
All right. Uh do we have Councilman Dutra?
Thank you. Um so I that's I wanted, I'm sorry, I'm beating a dead horse here, but that's exactly, thank you. Um a a city attorney Zettler, because to me, like I'm I, there are two processes, right? And if I remember correctly from the slides, I may be wrong. It said experience was thirty points, if I remember correctly. Um for for the um transfer from that Ella wants to make for the new buyer. But if I remember correctly, I I don't know and I may be wrong, someone can correct me. I don't know if Ella had any experience in kitchens beyond making sandwiches before she bought it. So it also, no offense, Ella, but I don't know if it like literally there's it it to me, there's it lacks it lacks equity, like the processes. So um i- am I hearing that correctly? Like the the two processes are completely the requirements are completely different. Am I right?
The the requirements are not necessarily different, uh Councilmember Dutra. They, what is different is the process and where we were in ti- in time in relationship like to to what was going on at the airport. When when Ms. King applied and the RFP process was uh released, um there was that metric with the point system that Director Williams showed because we engage in an RFP process. So that's one option that we have. If we have a vacant space, we say, okay, we're going to do an RFP, we're going to see who's who applies. And then we're going to use this metric to evaluate those applicants because we have to have a way to select those that respond uh positively respond to the RFPs, right? And that's what we use with Ms. King. Now, the same metrics in terms of financial capacity, experience and all that are all those conditions that are outlined in the lease that now the successful RFP respondent and Lee C., which is Ms. King, now needs to apply to the person or the business uh that she uh she decides to um have us have us uh look into them to see if they can be the the assignee to the business. The process is not the same. The 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 checkboxes are outlined on the lease that Ella signed. Not the same process, not the same conditions. Now there's somebody in the business and that's Ms. King.
So
Ms. King to do it is not an RFP, is an assignment.
Okay, I understand that. But I'm asking you, so you're telling me you would not hire someone like Ms. King in the future because she didn't have the experience at the time? But now that it's established, you are rate, you're changing those qualifications.
I believe Ms. King was the highest rated applicant for uh um Director Williams uh presentation. Ms. King was the highest ranking applicant that responded to the RFP.
She owned a sandwich stop.
Say that.
She owned a sandwich stop shop. So you're telling me that was out of six, I think you said.
I believe Ms. King was the owner and operator of another restaurant in a different city at the time.
Hollister, Ella's Italian Restaurant in Hollister for a number of years. And that restaurant in Hollister was one of the reasons that we looked at, hey, this individual has more experience. Similar to Ms. Apack, I took the staff to the Ella's Cafe when it was just a sandwich shop, right? We had to do homework to go back and look at Ella's Italian Restaurant in Hollister, which also did serve, uh I believe wine. So there was, there was an experience base there.
What homework did you do?
Well
Okay, I'm going to refocus everybody with the thought that why we are here, what we're asking questions on. And our city attorney uh can correct me if I am wrong. But we are here to talk about um whether we are going to grant the appeal of Director uh Rayvon's, uh excuse me, Williams' decision or we are going to deny the appeal. So let's focus in on that if you have any questions specific to that and specific to the process that's been presented to everyone. Um otherwise, we're going to move to public comments at this time.
Well, Madam Mayor, I am that my questions are, you know, relating to, I'm trying to talk about to get the experience level so I can understand whether or not, since we have city has discretion in the, if I understand correctly, Attorney Zettler, that we have a discretion to use our own brains to whether or not you um, you know, support a small business or not, right? So I'm trying to understand the process and if we're going to be fair in it, you know? And if that doesn't, if that doesn't meet it, then I have concerns. So that's why I'm asking those questions.
Okay, so you, yeah. So the RFP process is different than the process that uh we are now discussing tonight because it's an assignee of a lease. And um uh the process that uh Ella King went through in 2014 is different than what we are doing here tonight, which is talking about an appeal of a denial. Okay, so uh there may come a conversation uh to make sure, as what um Councilman Dutra said, to make sure that we are doing our our due diligence on it. But at this point, I'm hearing from our attorney as well as our interim uh city manager that we do and we have followed um those um procedures to the point where they were out. So I'm going to ask any other city council person at this time has a question um in regards. Okay, so then I'm going to move to public, um the public comments at this time. And uh Madam Clerk, you will let me know when someone is ready. And we will have two minutes on the clock for everyone to be able to speak. Um we are not here to answer questions. We are here to listen to your comments and um to move forward. Thank you very much. Uh Madam Clerk, who are we talking to?
I'm Jeremy.
Welcome, Jeremy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Jeremy Lesan. Um I've been a pilot at the airport for forty years.
Got some feedback going on.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Uh nope.
How about now?
No, still there.
Yep.
Okay, we got it.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. Um I've been there forty years. I want to give you a little bit of perspective from a pilot's perspective at the airport. Rayvon has his favorites and he has his enemies, and it's extremely subjective. This is not an empirical matter. It's not what Rayvon quotes as metrics. It's the fact that Rayvon does not want this to happen. He had a, he had a vendetta with United Flight. He lost. It cost the city eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And the judge said, only you saw that as a problem. If Rayvon wanted to make this restaurant work, he would do it. He doesn't, so he's finding everything he can do to block it. And the reason he's blocking it is like a child. He's very upset that um the restaurant owner went out and put up a tent and he said the FAA would not allow that. And it's ugly and you should get rid of it. And Ella went to the city twice and finally ended up going to the city manager and Rayvon didn't like that. And this is the truth. And so he has been upset ever since that happened. So we can sit here and quibble about what was said and what date and what happened. And you know and I know that if Rayvon wanted this to happen, it would be done.
Thank you, Jeremy. We appreciate your comments. Our next speaker.
Steve. Go ahead.
Welcome, Steve.
Well, Ella, um not only are you not lazy, you're one of the hardest-working businesswomen probably the city of Watsonville has ever known, and you are perfectly normal. You have been an asset to the city for years. I don't know if the city council wants you to open a vein and bleed strawberry nectar to prove your loyalty and your devotion to the residents of this community. Uh the appeal needs to be approved. I want to point out that the city of Watsonville approved the Santa Cruz Company's uh ridiculous uh purchase or allowing a company, Chipotle, spending twenty, which got, which was uh twenty-five million dollar judgment, criminal negligence in terms of clean, uh keeping food clean. And we're going to have that awful eyesight, horrible uh eyesore there uh uh next to Ramsey Park. And yet, has has Ella ever had any of these issues? Never. The place is spotless, the food is hygienically produced, it's fabulous cuisine. She is a wonderful, not only restaurateur and hostess, and she cares about her clients. She also cares about the city of Watsonville. Of course, we should uh give give her the uh the uh approve the appeal and she has every right to find a buyer for her property. And this is just, this is so Alice in Wonderland crazy, I can hardly believe it. I'm embarrassed, frankly, for the city of Watsonville, whom that city that I love is my adopted city. And I am really sorry, Ella, I can't apologize enough for having them taking you down like Alice in Wonderland, down the rabbit hole over this. And I do hope that you will not hold it against us because we love you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And our next speaker?
Barry, go ahead.
Welcome, Barry.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Barry Porter. I'm also a hangar um renter on the airport. I just wanted to point out one thing. There's been several questions about the difference between the RFP, the request for proposal versus the assignment. To me, the one major difference is is if the assignment goes forward, basically, there's continuity. The restaurant continues on, the building is occupied, the rent is paid. If you go back to an RFP process, how long is the restaurant going to be empty for the next two months, for the next six months, for the next year? Who knows how long it is going to sit there when it could be making money? If people would just, you know, step back and look at the big picture here. And I also thank Ella for for having such a great restaurant there for all these years. And we enjoyed it yesterday and the day before, and I hope it's there for a long time to come. Uh thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much, Barry, for your comments. And our next speaker is
Karina, go ahead.
Welcome, Karina.
Hi, Karina from District Five. Um I would just like to give Tiffany Ella the recognition she deserves as way more than just a sandwich shop owner. I'm I'm really sorry. I've appreciated and respected all of your businesses. You're an incredible businesswoman that I got to see in my life growing up. Uh my friends and I celebrated so many occasions in high school at your Hollister Restaurant. And we're just so excited when you moved to Watsonville. Um and it has been such an amazing honor to celebrate so many things at your restaurants. Um and I I know that you have been so involved in the community, not only donating time and goods to organizations, but your kindness. And I'm also really disheartened to hear what the previous speaker mentioned about Mr. Williams. And then also knowing um what what has transpired with Mr. Mondragon, who was also pushed out from his innovative farm at the airport. And the community is aware that you failed Ella again back in twenty twenty. So this is really disheartening to see this becoming a pattern. You know, um especially with the city, you you say that you are here for the city. Um and yet I continuously see Mr. Williams that we are being pushed out in small businesses and in events, housing. And so I I urge the city council to to also realize that in the city as well. Um this is, this is not what community looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
No, we don't have any.
Okay.
Oh, hold on. Um
Oh.
Ellie.
Oh, okay. Welcome, Ellie.
Yeah, sorry, I I didn't realize I had lowered it. Um good evening. This um was very entertaining to watch. I just have to say that. City Council, y'all asked some really great and direct questions. And Mayor Parker, you did a really good job at getting everybody back on point when it was derailing. So I just want to go ahead and praise y'all for that. Um I hope we're not deliberating for too long because it is really late. It's nine thirty and I just want to go ahead and remark that it's great that this meeting is on Zoom because I cannot imagine having to do this this late in person. So accessibility is important, right? So I love that we're here on Zoom. Um also, I really appreciate Mr. Williams the ways that he came forth with like the facts and watching Sumasco Suttler in action was great to see. I hope everybody has a good evening.
Thank you, Ellie. And it looks like we have one more person.
Yes, Emily, go ahead, please.
Welcome, Emily.
Can you hear me now?
Again, you got a little bit of a feedback.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, but you got, you have an echo. I just want you to know.
I just want to say that, you know, Ella has put a tremendous amount of effort into this business over the past whatever number of years during COVID. And she has made this business go. Why would you deny her the opportunity to sell her business to somebody else who's going to take it over on the exact same terms as she's been operating on forever? You know, my experience with Mr. Williams is that he is a vindictive individual. And he has cost the city of Watsonville, and most importantly, the airport itself of hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I'm sorry, Emily.
And you, as a city council, need to wake up to this fact and take responsibility and do the right thing by this small business owner Ella, who has spent the last years of the most difficult time to be in a restaurant business to sell her interest to someone who will carry this forward under better conditions than you are currently experiencing under her own lease. And I am ashamed to say that you would do this to this wonderful woman, this hardworking, single mother. You should be ashamed of yourselves if you don't reconsider this action.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on. Looks like Bernie.
Bernie. Bernie, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, y'all. This is.
Could you guys state your name and what?
Oh, yeah, my name is Bernie Gomez. Bernie Gomez, District One. I usually don't, don't stay this long for things that are not really in my realm, right? But just, it's just interesting to, to see the deliberation between like the small business, the city, the finances, all that stuff, right? I don't understand it, but at the end goal, I think the city needs to support small business, whether Ella wants to sell or not, or whatever. The, I think the city can assist in any way, shape or form to bring in this new ownership and this new, you know, potential, she might potentially make Ella's larger and better, you know, than what it, than what it is, what it is now. So just, yes, ask the city council to support this business, you know, Ella, what she's trying to do is see the future and the next, and just let's move on. Because at the end of the day, it is great food and I don't eat there a lot because, you know, I just don't. But when I have, it's wonderful food. It's, it's a great place to be and it's somewhere that I usually don't go. So I wouldn't mind having that place accessible to people like me, right? Who really, you don't, don't, don't take part, too much part into, in the, in restaurants and stuff like that, you know? But anyways, are you my time?
Thank you, Bernie. We have one last speaker. If you intend to speak, could you put your hand up now?
Yeah, Mari Cruz.
And that is our last speaker.
For now.
Welcome, Mari Cruz.
Thank you. So my name is Mari Cruz and I am actually one of the employees at Ellis of the airport. I was aware of what's going on, but I didn't realize of what depth it meant. So I would like just to tell the city council, you know, we are residents of Watsonville, so please allow us to continue working in the city where we live. I don't care if it's Rayvon, I don't care if it's Ella, I just want to be able to provide for my family. And that, allowing Ella to sell it will allow me to keep on providing for my family and allow money of my coworkers continue doing that. So remember, we worked through the pandemic. We were considered essential workers. So please, city council, consider that. Please take that in mind. We works, we, I exposed myself, I exposed my family trying to provide for the community I live in. Please look out for us. Please do not let me to be unemployed. I'm one of the few people that I'm willing to work. Remember, there's a shortage. And I wish everybody would realize how much the restaurant industry is bleeding. And it's not just Ellis. It's all, all of us. And I say us because I include myself on there. All of us are bleeding to continue in this industry and make it work. Please, we made it through the pandemic. Allow us to continue moving forward.
Mari Cruz, what district do you live in?
I live in District Four.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Okay, so we're going to move on at this point and we're moving on to some city council deliberations. Before we go further, interim city manager, Vivas, do you have a point of information you need to share with us? And, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for running the boards at the time and all the speakers.
Can I go ahead and remove Ms. King?
Yes, please do. We're into city council deliberations at this time. Ms. Vivas? Do you have a point of clarification that you wanted to share with us as we begin our deliberations?
Yes, no, I, I think it's important just, just to say, just really focus on, on the questions that is in front of you, which is not about Ella. I mean, Ms. King and I share many, many years of friendship and I, I too always refer to me as this is Buddy by Ella because I eat at Ellis at the airport very, very often. I love her food. I love, I love the, the business that I, I've watched Ms. King build at the airport. And I, I am a habitual customer of the restaurant. So, but I, I just really want to encourage the council to, to understand that this is not about how wonderful Ella is and the wonderful business that, that Ms. King has been able to run at the airport. This is, this is going forward, right? It is, it is about Ms. Cello Apac, who is perhaps interested in, in purchasing this business, but she's not here tonight. So when, when you have a moment and you're looking for, who are you going to leave this restaurant in the hands of Ms. King? Ms. King is leaving the business and now it's Ms. Apac who, who will be taking over. And in looking at Director Williams, not his direct work, but SBDC's analysis of the financial ability of Ms. Apac to be able to run and stay in business just as Ms. King was able to do, that is questionable. Nobody knows for sure, but we do know one thing for sure. Restaurant industry is a very high risk industry and many, many restaurants, more restaurants fail than, than are successful. So that, keeping that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you. Interim city manager, Vivas, I'm going to refocus with, to the question and please, you and our attorney, Ms. Sutler, correct me if I am wrong. The issue before us is whether to grant the appeal. Although clearly at this time, Ella's at the airport does not have a lease. So that would put us into a completely different process. Or uphold Director Rayvon Williams' decision and move forward at that point. And that would be also a discussion for Ella's at the airport and, and the city on how they would move forward. So we are deliberating just that. It will be one or it'll be the other. And as we deliberate and we have any other further clarifications or questions from the council. Councilman Hearst.
I think there might be some middle ground here where we give Ms. Apac the opportunity to kind of fill in the blanks, the scarce and incomplete information. Because I feel that that's the crux of the, of the issue. You know, the, the appeal is here because we didn't get that information. If we had that information, there might be a different outcome on it. I don't know. But we're, we're working with scarce and incomplete information. And so my recommendation is that we continue this or, you know, put it to bed one way or another. But if Ms. Apac had an opportunity to, you know, fill in the blanks, I think that might settle it one way or another.
So let's clarify that. If we decide to go in a different way and not make a decision tonight, then that would take us once again into another area where we'd have to go back and come back. So I'm going to ask the question, is that, is that the main reason why the denial was put in place or the not accepted Director Williams? Was it because just that information was missing or was there a much greater picture and more detail to it? You're muted.
Thank you for the question. Characterizing the statement as just that information, I don't think is, is accurate. Once again, as I said at the very beginning, my, this is not about the, the current principles at the, at the restaurant. The lease assignment, it has basic data. And we are very much aware of what happens when we bring in a individual and they fail. We lived that for fourteen months with the previous restaurant facility, facility. And we, we learned a hard lesson from that. So when you say just that information, the whole body of information provided from the business plan, and I think it's important to note that the business plan that was represented, that was presented to us was actually the same business plan that the previous assignment person provided. And it was the same business plan that the person before that provided. It's a business plan that I read four times and each time it got smaller. We need to make sure that when someone comes into a restaurant, that they do the good work that Ella, the principals of Ella did. So when you say just that information, they would have to come and provide a pervasive business plan. I take issue with Mr. Simpson. And my previous, and my fellow airport managers have told me, don't let someone just come at your restaurant, in your airport and set up shop. We don't do that for the aviation people here. We don't do that for any businesses. We have a very strict perspective that we want to follow. So it's not just the information. And that statement is just the business plan. The balance sheet, the income statement, cash flows, quick ratios. The restaurant business is no joke. Ella has demonstrated that she is certainly adroit and capable. All we're asking you to do is let us have someone like her that can put together the same cogent, comprehensive and consistent information to produce a product that's likewise.
So it's not just providing those three facts that would change this, this?
I don't think so.
Okay, so that, that clarification. So did that answer? Yeah. And as soon as Councilman Hearst, does that kind of clarify what you were saying?
I suppose so, you know, I think that the characterization and the personal assassination, the character assassination that's going on here tonight has gone too far. And I don't think Mr. Falcon's done himself any good, nor have the pilots in their grudge against Rayvon. So with that, I'm just going to move the, the resolution and we'll see if it passes or gets a second or fails.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to move the motion forward. Do we have, I will call on you, the first person to discuss it, Councilwoman Garcia.
I just wanted to hear what the motion is.
Oh, the motion is, well, that's a good question, but I think it's.
Well, it's the stuff, is what's in our packet.
To deny the appeal.
It's to deny the appeal. To deny the appeal, straight up. All right, is there a second? Is there a second from any of the other council? So at this time, there's still deliberations to be done. Okay.
I move that we support, that we support.
I'm sorry.
No, I can make a motion.
Thank you.
You don't need to call me to make a motion.
When I call on you.
I move to approve the sale of.
Councilman Dutra, I am calling on, as I said I would, Councilwoman Garcia. And Councilwoman Garcia, as soon as I finish that, I said I would call on you. So I'm following that. Councilwoman Garcia, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I already asked just to clarify what the motion was and then the motion was clarified.
Okay, good. Does anyone else have comments or any discussion? Well, patience is a virtue. And Councilman Dutra, thank you for your politeness.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve this, to approve Ella to sell, to sell her business.
That's not what we're doing. You'd say, in this instance.
To deny, to approve the appeal.
To approve the appeal. That is correct.
Second.
Grant the appeal.
Thank you.
Okay, and there was a second by Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes. Is this time for discussion or?
This is time for discussion. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I speak?
No. I'm asking, does the entire city council have any other comments from anyone on council? All right. Hey, Mr. Dutra, Councilwoman Dutra.
I don't know if you see my little hand up in the corner, but I maybe.
Well, it's always up. So I was confused because you never put it down, but you know, I'll, I'll try to be cognizant of that. Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you. I, I first want to say I'm, I'm embarrassed this is even coming in front of us. This should have been dealt with, you know, by staff. The fact that the council is getting involved in this at this point is something that, you know, should not have happened. Yeah, I, I think that, you know, we, we get a bad rap sometimes here on the city council for not supporting small businesses, small businesses. And we, we need to, we need to make sure that we make it, we don't add so much red tape so that small businesses fail. And so when I looked at this this evening, all I saw was red tape. It was full of it. And as someone who supports small businesses, who had one of my own, I know how hard it is. And, and when you look back upon it, a lot of the small business owners in our community are the ones that are donating to our causes. That's always there for us. It's not the big corporate boxes that are, you know, stepping up to support, you know, the organizations that our community survives on. So, and Ella's been there for that. So in this document, it says that city has our discretion. And in doing so this evening, I'm using my discretion and I hope my colleagues use their discretion as well to support a small business, to support the employees there. They will be, they will be, they will not have a job in the middle of COVID. Like, we can't do this to people. That, that restaurant needs to continue and to transfer on. And people need to be able to keep their jobs. So that is why I moved this motion. And I really hope that in the future, we take a look on how we are treating our small businesses. Because when we are out in the community and I'm listening to them, all I hear is, you know, I don't want another Starbucks. I don't want, I don't want this. I don't want that. Well, here's the opportunity to have a small business that's not corporate owned. And we're giving them, giving them a hard time. So tonight, I'm going to be supporting the appeal. And I hope that we do get a transfer in there and that there is no hiccup and that the business continues, the menu continues, and that the staff, you know, continues to have a job. So thank you.
Mayor Procham Montesino.
Yeah, I'll be in support of this motion, but you know, so I don't know if the proper to make also, you know, Ella, you know, she can probably hear me, you need to sign the lease. You know, there's steps that both sides need to bind, bind, you know? Not signing the lease, I think, was improper on Ella, for whatever reason. So, because now we're down to, there's no lease and we're still, you know, arguing about, about this thing. There's two, what I've heard, there's two things going on. One was a lease and the other one's whether the, the transfer, you know? But like I said, both entities need to. But like I said, both entities need to, you know, move forward on, on keeping that restaurant open. And, and you know, and I'm very practical and, you know, from my standpoint, it's not the city's responsibility if there's concern that the new owner is not capable of running the business. It's not, that's not in our interest, you know, if they're not capable, they're, well, they're going to lose, you know. I don't think we're qualified for us to be making those decisions, you know. You know, if, if the, you know, if she signs the lease, the transfer's good, then we move on. If she doesn't make it, then like everyone says, a lot of small businesses don't make it. But that's, that's her decision. It's not ours. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilwoman Kiroz Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Two points that I would like to make. The denial, the initial denial should have been put in writing. That should not have been verbal. That should have been right in writing with clear reasons as to why. The second thing is that the lease should have been given to the applicant with sufficient time. And I would just like to agree with Councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Protem's assessment that it should be, in my opinion, I may not be an expert on these matters, but it seems to me that if the person who is handing over their business with the business plan says that that person is qualified, that seems to be enough for me. Ella had another business that is running smoothly, that has been transferred over with success. And those are my comments. Thank you very much.
All right, is there any other council person who would like to comment? Councilman Estrada.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think I too would have liked to have seen a resolution before it came to us, but here we are. And, you know, I would like to remind the council that, you know, we are the stewards of this public property on behalf of the city of Watson. It is our job to make sure that we have the best qualified people running that property. And, and to have high standards is not a bad thing. To have high standards is a good thing. Because then we ensure that our investment in that public property will pay dividends to the community. And so the vetting and the process should be extensive. It should not be easy. It should not be one of those things where if you don't complete, you know, A through Z, that you move on. We, you know, and, and the city, you know, again, you know, it just, I just sort of think that, you know, what's the point of having these leases and these, in the process and protocols? If, when they become inconvenient for people, then we want to break them. And so I believe from what I've heard that the, that the director, Director Williams was fair, that he did everything in good faith to try to, to help with this process. And so I will not be supporting the, the motion on the floor. And I do support a rig, a rigid, a sort of a thoughtful, intensive, complete process to make sure that we find the right person to guarantee success at this restaurant and not to just sort of hope that things will work out. Those are just my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Estrada. Everyone has had an opportunity. Do you still have your hand up, Mayor Protem Montesino? Did you want to say something else? Okay. So I think Councilman Estrada summed up my, my belief in this. I think it was a fair process. I think along the way, there were some missteps. There is no lease at this point. So how can there be a lease as signee? And that would mean we go back to the drawing board and start again. And you'd still end up with the same, the same lease or no lease. And then you just wouldn't have a lease. We had a signed lease. There were terms within the lease. The terms were there to create success and to create success for our small businesses. So by making us, and I love the words, that we are the stewards of our city to create high standards for which we would like all of our businesses to succeed. I would have wished it would have completed itself before it got to us, but that's what our job is. And it's not always pretty and it's not always popular. And I love Ella's food and I love Ella. But in this instance, I'm not going to support the motion. So in saying that, let us, Ms. Vives, do you have a quick comment before I move to roll call?
I'm not, I'm not sure that is, that is quick, but I do want to acknowledge or share with the council that, that yes, that, that was the intention, just to have this looked at by staff again before, before they got to the council. And I like a moment, if you are interested, I can share with you the fact that I, that I have actually met, personally met with Ms. Apac a couple of times in trying to reassess and avoid having to be put in the situation that we are here this evening, right? Like, and I utilized yet a new SBDC consultant to look at the information, not provided by Director Williams. I actually asked Ms. Apac to provide directly the information to me. And I have to share with the council as you deliberate and make your decision that what I have learned with the information provided is consistent with the experience of Director Williams. I, where, where there is not adequate financial forecasting or understanding of the business model that she's about to embark in and where it just really raised sufficient questions in, in my process that unfortunately Ms. Apac has not yet concluded a full diligent evaluation of the business that she intends to purchase. Is not knowledgeable of what Ella has, how big it is, how many tables there are, who's going to run the business. There are significant managerial deficiencies in her business plan. There is a significant number of questions in the, in the financial and her food costing. When she says she will run Ella's menu at X percent of food cost and when we see her financial forecast is reflecting of a much lower number. So it's really a question of whether or not she really intends to run Ella's menu, which it comes at a more higher price point than what she's proposing in her business forecast. So the different business consultant that I utilized to support my, re, looking at the applicant again, really supports that Ms. Apac has still have some significant business decision, business deficiencies that point at she, she, she may not be likely to succeed in this endeavor or run the restaurant that Ms. King is running right now. So I just wanted to share that with.
Thank you, interim city manager Vives. I have a question before we actually do this. And the question would be that if the motion is passed, then they would go back and still be in the same negotiated place where there is no, no lease and the last lease that was signed had specific requirements in it. Could you give us some insight into that, City Attorney Zettler?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor Parker. If the motion to grant the appeal passes, the staff will bring to the council at a subsequent meeting a resolution with findings to support the council's decision. In addition to that, staff will attempt to negotiate a lease with Ms. King such that she can assign it. And we will bring that lease back to council.
But that may not, that may not move forward.
That is correct.
We'd be in the same, the same questions would still be on the table.
That is correct.
Or we could possibly negotiate the lease directly with Ms. Apac and this is for Ms. King's wishes.
That would be my next question, you know, if we, if, if we do not pass this, the motion that's on the table, then it becomes either Ella's at the airport continues their lease and follows what's in the lease to move forward, or they don't continue their lease at all and we can negotiate with whoever would like to move into the, the place. So either way, we could be supporting a local, okay. So I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so at this point, let's call the question and the question is to, Mr. Councilman Dutra, would you like to restate your motion so for clarity?
Just to approve the appeal.
So this is to approve the appeal. Go ahead, Madam Clerk. You can call roll.
Dutra?
Yes.
Estrada?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hearst?
No.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kiroz Carter?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
The motion carries.
Okay. So we have, so this will go back to our staff and there will be a discussion. Because although we have held the appeal, there's still no lease that's signed. So there cannot be a lease as signee at this time. And staff will have to work that out at this, at this point and then bring it back to us if need be. Mayor Protem Montesino?
Yeah, can we give some direction to, you know, to try to work out the lease first? And then, you know, separate those two issues out. Because I think the combination is what getting us nowhere. You know, figure out the lease first and then, you know, work out the logistics of the transfer.
Or, or open, open negotiation with other people who would like to be in the building if the lease isn't signed.
That, that is not an option, Mayor Parker, because you have upheld, you approve the appeal. So basically it is, it is, I believe, and I'll let Samantha comment on this, but I believe is approving the assignment to Cello Apac. So provided Ms. Apac is interested and able and willing to buy the restaurant from Ms. King, I believe the, the next step will be drafting a lease agreement. And at this point, because Ms. King doesn't have a lease, like it's been pointed out, I would suggest that, that we engage in a lease negotiation with Ms. Apac, who, who will be the tenant that will continue with the lease. So it'd be important that, and actually I have had this conversation with Ella because I brought it up. Ella, you don't have anything to assign. Wouldn't it be in your best interest to, to have something to assign? So sign the lease. I've asked that of Ms. King several times and, and it's been, she, she told me that we could, actually she didn't, she had no interest in signing a lease, that it would be okay for me to direct deal with Ms. Apac.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Messenger to speak.
I would, if, if that's the direction of the council, what I would recommend is that the, the lease, if we negotiate directly with Ms. Apac, be subject to the assignment of Ella's business concurrently with the execution of the lease so that we don't end up with Ms. Apac with a lease, but no restaurant business having been transferred.
So you're saying that concurrently that they would have to agree, Ella's would have to agree to the lease so that it can be assigned? Otherwise.
She would have to agree to the assignment or sale of her business to make certain that, that these two things track concurrently so that we don't end up with one transaction moving forward and the other one not.
When can we expect this to come back to council for a report, if not any action?
The lease terms have been negotiated, so it shouldn't take long because that document has been prepared and is, that portion is ready. So I'm not sure, that will be a question for Ms. King as to how long her transaction will take to, to be finalized, the sale, the sale of her business.
Well, I think we're most interested, the sale is one thing, but I think council is most interested in the movement forward and how, and how they, and the lease issue, period. So keep us surprised, please. I don't think, I think we've given direction, at least at this point. And from that point, this hearing is closed. We don't have any emergency items added to the agenda. And a request and scheduling for future agenda items. We can let Madam Clerk know about that. So at this time, we will adjourn. Thank you for everyone, for your politeness and for your hard work in listening to each other and listening to the respondents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.